Good evening. Good evening, everybody. This is a call to order for the regular board meeting of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Today is Monday, August 25th. The time is 6:34. May everybody rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Benahan, can you do a roll call?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, everyone, and welcome, everyone. Christine Baptiste Perez. Akeisha Casimir.
Here.
Ms. Marisa Estermira Jimenez. Mr. William Medina.
Present.
Ms. Jennifer Perez.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Sokolov.
Present.
Mr. Robert Traver. And Mr. Andrew Woodson. Oh, is it Andrew Woodson? We have a call, Madam Chair.
Um, we don't have student representatives right now because of the start of the school year, but we will next board meeting. So we'll move on to public comment. Any backswing of things? Ms. Jess Resto? Thank you, Pam.
Good evening. Jess Resto, and I'm here tonight as a concerned parent. Last year, our district started with a celebration, a party that felt more about egos than our kids. Months later, critical staff were laid off and graduation fell short of what our children deserved. And this year, it's starting the same way with another party at the amphitheater while real needs go unmet. We were promised change. The governor came to Bridgeport and said that we've known, what we've known for years, that our kids have been failed. We were told that, we were told the state commissioner would oversee the board, that a forensic audit would be done, and that parents' voices, voices would finally be heard. My husband and I, or I, attended every cert listening session. The messaging, the messages were clear. Facilities are crumbling. Funding is insufficient, and our students' needs have not yet been met. And yet, commissioner has still not addressed the parents directly. The only time she responded was during the recent bus and crisis, and that felt like damage control, not true engagement. But what do our children get? Not the required funding for pairs in kindergarten, fewer guidance counselors, assistant principals, and SEL staff. Librarians taken away in a district already being, already behind in reading. Buildings that are still crumbling. Even basic necessities, fully functioning bathrooms and safe cafeterias aren't guaranteed. No child should have to scurry from one stall to another to find toilet paper. School starts this week. Has anyone checked the bathrooms, the cafeterias, the classrooms our kids will be in? I'm sure parents would gladly volunteer to help if asked. It's unfair that we have to fight for the basics and it's the, and it's the, sorry. It's unfair that we have to fight for the basics, and it's time that the board and the commissioner figure out how to truly engage more parents. Stop giving parties to adults while giving excuses to children. Please respect our families enough to give our kids what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is regular meeting minutes from, approving of the regular meeting minutes from June 9th, 2025. Is there a motion?
By move by Mr. Benahan.
Moved by Mr. Benahan, is there a second? Second by Mr. Medina. Um, any discussion on that? Mr. Sokolov?
No.
Oh, alright, seeing none, all in favor to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 9th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Anyone passes? Um, the next item is special meeting from July 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Benahan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Special meeting from July 28th, 2025? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Benahan. There's a second by Mr. Traver. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the last one, special meeting from August 4th, 2025? Moved by Mr. Benahan. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Medina. Discussion? All in favor? Is it me? Is that better? Alright, any opposed? Any abstentions? The next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. Uh, so just want to provide an update on the Board of Education project, progress to the state interventions. So, um, the board has completed its six mandatory trainings from the state in collaboration with CAE. And since then, the board has worked on establishing a vision for the district. So we started that progress, process by hosting four community forums throughout the summer, throughout July. We also had a thought exchange survey that was out, and Dr. Avery's going to get me those results that he shared with the board. They were published from August 1st through August 15th. Um, and the last I checked with him prior to the, the end date was over 250 responses. So, uh, we'll, we'll get that out there to everybody once we, um, get the data together. We also, as a board, um, work with Dr. Avery on his evaluation for, um, the nine or 10 months that he's been with us. And, um, that was submitted to Dr. Avery, uh, the week of, the first week of August. He has not responded, so, or he did, he actually said he's fine with it. He's not going to request the meeting, further meeting on it. So that, that's kind of some of the work we worked on over the summer. We also had some committee meetings throughout the summer and special meetings for just moving different items along. So, uh, this year, we're really trying to work on some of the, um, items that we, we learned through the CAE trainings to implement our agendas and, and really, um, support the, the board in managing our meetings better, managing our, ourselves, um, so that we can support the district in a, in a improved way. So, yeah, uh, that's the report I have. Just, is there any questions for me on anything? Yes, Ms. Marissa Jimenez.
I have a few questions. Um, the first one is around a community forum, and I know, um, after we had the summer community forums, we were chatting about having them more frequently and having just boards, specific community forums. So I wanted to suggest, now that we're going to start school this week, if we can potentially have one next week or early on the week after, so that if there's any issues with, like with the schools or anything like that, usually there's a lot of bumps on the road, like first week of school, so that we can hear the parents, what needs to be addressed? What are your concerns? And really, the reason why I kind of want to push it out a little bit is because we want to give the administrators opportunity to fix those issues, but if something is out there that has not been resolved, then we need to be looped in just to kind of mitigate that and, you know, try to have a smooth start. So that was one of the things. Then, two other items I wanted to know, so as a result of the summer, community forums, we were chatting about potentially having some of those items as part of our strategic plan and all of that. So I kind of wanted to know what's the status of the strategic plan? And then lastly, um, the superintendent search, what's the update on that?
Yeah, so the strategic plan would be something we collaborate with a superintendent on. And given that we have an interim at the moment, we, we would have to wait, we would most likely need to wait for our permanent superintendent. As far as a search goes, um, I emailed the state, and so we'll, we'll see what they say. I've asked if we can, if they, with their support, they, we can start a search. And so we're, we're waiting on a response. So that was emailed about two weeks, a week and a half ago? Two weeks ago? Um, following our conversation at the August 4th meeting. And so it, it wouldn't, for, for us to put that type of task in an interim, and then a new superintendent comes in and wants to, has new ideas, a new vision, it, it, it kind of would make extra work for us. So it, it'd be critical to do it with a superintendent that's permanent. Mrs. Sokolov?
Yeah, I believe I spoke on this in committee as well. So if the state doesn't allow us to search for a superintendent for the next year, will we move on without a vision?
No, we, we're still going to establish a vision, that's how we started it. But the strategic, strategic plan is more than just a vision. You're setting district goals, you're, uh, uh, you're doing progress monitoring, you're, there's a lot more to that than just a vision.
Right.
We still are going to work on a vision, that's how we started it. And that's something that, that, that we can, you know, requires community stakeholders and involve and stuff, so.
And as, as I've also mentioned oftentimes, that, um, if the current interim superintendent develops a strategic plan in conjunction with the board, we don't necessarily have to shift because that will be a joint, that will be a joint thing. We, the superintendent we can hire can implement the board and the district's strategic plan rather than coming in and changing it from somewhere else, because we saw exactly what happens when somebody comes in with their own plan, without any input from the city. So this way, we could get a head start. And I don't think it would harm Dr. Avery either way to do the work, whether or not, I'm not chiming in on the superintendent's search or not, anything, whether or not he is hired as permanent superintendent, is a good resume builder as well. So I don't really think there's any professional harm to him into helping us out with that portion while we, we.
Good chair. Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Sokolov, you make some, some really good points. Again, it's a matter of, uh, the strategic plan is a very, you know, elaborate, intense process. And so I would, I would at least recommend, let's get school started. And come September, October, the board figure out, figures out a timeline that you want to use to move that forward. Uh, and then we can kind of adhere to that timeline based on that, because, uh, yes, I have no problem supporting the work. Things that the district needs, I've been in the district a couple of years, I can kind of guide that, those, those decisions around making sure that we can fill the void of those. So sure, I think that's, that's a good possibility, but, so if, if the board will start thinking a little bit about, you know, timelines, and then you also have to figure out who you're going to solicit for, to help you do that, be it, you know, someone local, you put it out there for bid, and then you work through it that way as well. And look at how much money you're going to spend on it, because you can go from $15,000 to $200,000 if you want someone to do, help do the work. So again, you got to look at the budget, look at how much you're willing to spend as a board to make that work as well.
Absolutely, thank you. My, my intention wasn't to start tomorrow. My intention wasn't to start tomorrow while schools are starting, but my, also my intention is, the state has not been very responsive to us. They've been talking at us rather than with us, it's not really a cooperative relationship. So we don't know when they're going to get around to allowing us to do the job the citizens elected us to do.
So, yeah, so that's why we, we started with the, the vision at least. And then as we, we go on, you know, the board's going to continue working towards something like a strategic plan, excuse me. As Dr. Avery, it's, it's a timely process.
Thank you.
Mr. Traver.
I would agree with what has been said by all on the strategic plan. I do believe that Ms. Jimenez, Estermira Jimenez, also is correct about having the community forum in the relatively near future is a valid point. I, I do think that we need to refer to the, um, uh, policy committee. The idea that we have floated about changing our policy on community forums to build them in more frequently. But I think that having one in the near future would be a, a, I, I support her idea of having one soon, just to get, uh, feet, to allow for feedback from the community, from the parents, as she described it.
So we'll move on. I do want to, I, I, this is actually in my report, I forgot to say, welcome back to the school year to everybody. We have some principals in the room, welcome back. Welcome back to the, to the school year, so that's also important, right? We're starting the year. So, Happy New Year. I'm going to move on to committee reports. We'll start with finance committee, the finance committee met last Wednesday. Forgot the date, um, but we met last Wednesday. And, um, some of the items that we discussed are on today's agenda, including, um, uh, the lease for the adult education building that we use at, um, on Casup Street. And then, um, a couple grant applications for three of the family resource centers. So Seiza Bertaglia, Dunbar Roosevelt. Can you look closer? Is this good? And then we also discussed the university school agreement that comes to us every year in August. That's coming to the day before us. And, um, then the Dr. Avery has given us the draft of the budget binder that, um, that the board needs to look at for this school year. Are there any referrals to my committee?
Yes, Pam. I'd like to refer the news article we read about the buses being stored and some sort of contract being worked out with a, without us signing off on it. We are bound by this contract, and as far as I know, we, our powers, we're not taking away to sign contracts. So if this contract was changed in any way, shape, or form, and it's going to bind Bridgeport Public Schools to this contract, we need to see it, and we need to sign it, because again, we all got the same information from the newspaper. I don't know if anybody else got one piece of extra information out of anybody, but all's I know is what I read in the paper, and that's no way to do business. The state needs to let us know what we are bound to, especially since the funding's not guaranteed in the next year. Thank you. Do the chair.
Yeah, just for some clarity, uh, I too don't know the details of that contract as well. These things have been made, you know, you know, um, with the state technical assistance team and the techno, I mean, and the transportation company, and they're working through, uh, that process. I'm not privy to the details, so I'm just being told that they were taking care of that, so I didn't want to make, for the record, I, I don't know. My team doesn't know. We provided data to them, uh, and then they took it from there, and, um, you know, unbeknownst to me, the details of that, again, I'm not clear as well. So I will, you know, I'm working with the state team, they're coming in, I think, tomorrow. And so I'll ask that question as well as they finalize. I know they were still waiting for the transportation company to, to review the existing contract and looking at the data that we provided them, uh, and looking at the comparison between the two. There are some options that the district can take about, instead of paying them, paying them monthly instead of quarterly, I'm thinking it is. So there was, there were some possible savings, you know, in doing that. Again, don't have the details for you, uh, but we will also, I will also ask for the details.
Any other referrals? Ms. Casimir?
This isn't necessarily a referral, Madam Chair, but I'll make it short and sweet. During the last year, it has been repeated over and over and over again by Mr. Sokolov and Mr. Traver that they never had a chance to speak at all at the finance committee meetings that I was chairing last year. So I just wanted to make sure that I tell the public and the state that that is an out and out lie. They spoke on May 20th of 2024, the meeting September 16th, October 21st, and November 18th. So I just want to clear the record, see, he was able to say over and over again, but when the dark-skinned person starts talking, it's a problem. So I just want to clear the record that I have proof right here in my hand for any parents or any community members that want me to email the minutes from the meetings that Mr. Traver and Mr. Sokolov said that they weren't allowed to speak. Were May 20th, September 16th, October 21st, and November 18th. I have every single last word, every single last question they asked, that was answered. That's all I want. Thank you.
My next committee is going to be the third Wednesday of the month, September 17th. It's going to be, um, most likely, um, virtual, because I will be out of town, so that will be virtual. I, I, let me finish mine, and I'll get to you.
Okay.
So I'll go back to, I'm just going to say my next meeting date. I heard him. It'll be September 17th, virtual, um, at 5:30. That's for the finance committee, and we could do it sooner if needs be with all the different items we need for the budget binder. Mr. Medina, referral?
Yes, um, we've been waiting for quite some time, uh, so I would like you to maybe, as a referral, to get, uh, the funds that are available for the PTSO and the PAC. They had a district PAC money that was never, uh, said what was the money or the funding that was available. And we would still like that information and also to find out, um, what is the new, uh, district PAC funds that are available. And we still don't have receipts of what was spent on the last, uh, the event that they actually did do at the end of last year. Also, can we find out what is the contract that we have right now? I know we have a convocation on Wednesday. Can we find out what, what is being, uh, spent when it comes to the convocation also?
The, the convocation's not covered by the district, but Dr. Avery, we're not covering that cost.
There's no cost to the district whatsoever, from top to bottom, there's no spending here. And the, and the, I just want to make sure, given if there is, that's what we're, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for what is the cost of the convocation for us? I'm not here, the state issue that's between them and them, whatever they did. But I know our staff and our community has been reaching out very often, more often than not right now. And, you know, the teachers are just acting for simple things, pencils, paper, and folders. They didn't want a convocation, they wanted, they were happy with what, what, what the district was doing, what Dr. Avery and the staff was doing. They were very happy, but then they find it to be very disrespectful for anybody to step in and force us to have a convocation, and we don't know the details. But we're entering into a place where we don't know the details. So I'm looking for the details.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that on the agenda.
That's all I have for today.
Gotcha. Who else? Mr. Traver?
I'm not sure how you want me to respond, given our items on the agenda tonight about board decorum, but the falsehoods that Ms. Cas-
We're going to move on, I'm ending that conversation right now.
But you didn't end it a moment ago.
We're going to move on. Instruction and Support Service Committee? We're going to go Instruction and Support Service Committee. So I know you have something for tomorrow, uh, next, for this week.
Should I say it in my report? Because that was what was done before?
Instruction and Support Services Committee.
So as was done before, under the old order of the board, um, as the chair of instruction and support, I could-
You guys can keep going back and forth.
No, no, I know, I know, I don't want to do that.
Continue.
I'm telling you, I don't want to do that. I'm saying I don't want to do that.
Then let's get to the-
That was the way we used to do business in this board, and I'm not looking to do that. But somebody just was allowed to do that. And so I resent the fact that somebody was allowed to misrepresent the truth. So I'll leave it at that. Given our new push in, in policy on the agenda tonight to have decorum in this, somebody was allowed to violate that.
We haven't even passed that yet, we didn't want to-
The Instruction and Support Services Committee will be meeting on Wednesday. I sent out an email to the members of the committee and the administrators involved. We are essentially going to be recapping the items that we were dealing with at the end of the last year, not anticipating any new business that would be actionable items to be referred to the board at the next meeting. More a matter of looking at things like what Mr. Medina just mentioned, the PAC PTSO expenditures at the end of the year that we were looking at at the end of last year, um, the student score, test scores, the special ed, um, training that we had discussed at the end of last year for the teachers at the beginning of this year. The suspensions, um, in the particular areas that we were concerned about last year. So if anybody has anything else new that they want to refer to us tonight, or by tomorrow morning, I'll be finalizing the agenda for posting tomorrow. That'll be Wednesday night at 5:30 in room 305. That is the fourth Wednesday of the month, which would be our normal meeting time, which is why I'm going ahead with the meeting on Wednesday night.
Any referrals to Mr. Traver's committee? Alright, we're going to move on to, um, policy personnel. Mr. Medina?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Last meeting, we had a special meeting about five days ago, August 21st, 5:30 at 305. Many of those topics are right now on the agenda. I've looked forward to having our next meeting September 10th, 2025. It'll be the second Wednesday of every month. We are attacking a lot of those, um, policies that the state would like us to, you know, look into, that are seen as a little bit outdated, that don't match our, uh, our mission statement as we move forward with the district. Dr. Avery and, and Chris, I think he's here, uh, will be working side by side. And I hear that we have a lot of work to do, so I invite all the community to come out and speak, because it's going to be something that we're going to literally, from the foundation up, start building and start working to get this done. Um, and we are looking forward to the challenge. Uh, also, some of those policies are, that we're planning to change as a board, also are on the agenda today. I look forward, especially with public comments, that we would, uh, you know, back up our community and our staff and our parents on extending that policy. I'll take any referrals, if there's any questions or comments.
Any referrals to policy? Go ahead.
She has the list, sorry. Hold on, go ahead.
I have the list, and I-
You'll email it, right?
Yes, I emailed it before this meeting. And I just added another one, so it's a list of 11, so happy to help you, I'm part of the committee, so.
Yes, that's right.
So first thing, I went through, when I first came on the board, I went through and revised, did a cross-reference of series 9,000 bylaws and compared it with other, um, towns westward, Darien, Redding, and, um, wanted those changes incorporated as we're going through the 9,000 series updates that we'll be doing through, through the next few months. So that's the first one. The second one would be finance committee, a policy around finance committee approving all financial transfers over $25,000. So this I got from the forensic audit. And the state basically saying we need to have greater oversight and all of that stuff. Third, development of a lottery policy to avoid gaming the system. So this is not something that I was aware of until the past few months. So I would like the policy committee to work on a policy to ensure transparency through the lottery for all the magnet schools. Item four, meeting minutes policy. I'd like to see the meeting minutes. Right now, our policy is a little bit vague in terms of when they need to be posted and all of that stuff. So like FOIA, it would be nice if we can get it on our BPS website. Our minute meetings, our meeting minutes posted within seven days, and then up on the website for 12 months. So if a parent is curious what happened during a certain meeting of that school year, it's there for them. This one, um, next one, make calendar requirements for the subcommittees. And this one, I'm a little in between, because we do have, like Mr. Traver just said, his comedic meets the fourth Wednesday of each month. It would be nice if we can solidify the dates similar to the board meetings. So that's kind of what that- So that's kind of what that's alluding to. Um, update policy around public comment that is a requirement for all regular and special board meetings. So we would have public comment at all regular and special board meetings. And then in terms of what's required to speak, it would only be name and affiliation by affiliation. I'm saying you're a parent, you're a teacher, that. Seventh item, hardened procurement policy to include all material, materials purchased above twenty-five thousand dollars. So that would include any I T related, um, requirements as well. There's a conversation that took place in the spring that, um, we ended up finding out only some things come to the board, so we want to kind of harden that language to say anything above twenty-five thousand dollars, um, needs board approval. Eighth item, um, harden the frequency requirements of regular audits. So usually, regular audits of our system are done every, every year. However, um, so that needs to be defined in our policies, and I don't believe it is. And then forensic audits every year, every five years, or as requested. So if something happens during the annual audit that seems a little fishy, then we can request a forensic audit. Nine, all meeting materials are required within forty-eight business hours of a meeting. So that's so that the board members can actually review, um, the meeting materials before, um, the meeting, especially if we have to vote on something. Um, and I do realize there's emergency, emergencies that take place, but it would be nice if we can get them in advance. The tenth item, policies should be audited on a yearly basis for updates. Um, I got this from the fact that we have some policies that are outdated. Um, saw some that haven't been updated since twenty twelve. That, that's not okay. So definitely want to do an audit of our policies every year to kind of prevent that from happening. And then, um, the last item, sorry for the laundry list, is increase board community forum, um, to potentially a quarterly basis, whatever, you know, we think is appropriate.
You said quarterly? You said, I'm sorry?
Quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other, and I will say that a lot of the things that, or not a lot, but like some of the items that you mentioned are some of the things that, um, Dr. Avery's pushing out towards the board, um, as, as a result of, of the audit. Um, and so those items are going to be, um, triaged to make, those are the first items that we need to go through is the financial oversight. And so, um, we're really going to be working, um, with Mr. Medina and like getting those items on his committee, um, sooner than later, um, so that, uh, you know, those items go, go through quicker and, and, um, Mr. Medina, any other? Dr. Avery?
Just for, just for clarity as well, the, the draft budget book that I provided for you, Nestor and I have went through policy and it's going to do a lot of what you're asking for, you know, making sure that we know exactly what we're going to do, when we're going to audit. We want to make sure it transfers. All those things are somewhat in there. Uh, and once we get it approved by the state, then we will work with the board and the Finance Committee to make sure that we train the board on what needs to happen. A lot of it is timelines and things that we need to do to keep the community, you know, abreast of what we're doing with the money and how we're going to hold ourselves transparent for doing the right thing with, 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 with the funds. And so I, I appreciate you following back up with that because that's going to be something, uh, the state's requiring it as well. The commissioners requiring that. Uh, you know, based on those thirty-four recommendations from, from the audit. So we're gonna, we took that and we kind of, you know, put it together. It kind of came up with a systematic way of, of doing some checks and balances across the, the year. We haven't, we, we'll mandate getting to the, in front of the community, talking about budget, teaching budget. Uh, and one of the things that we're going to do with data across the district, uh, as you're going to see in my superintendent report, I'm going to, I'm going to throw a lot of things at you guys, but I want the board to kind of give me some direction as to what you want to be meaning for you as a board member. Uh, and then, then I'll do some things from the administrative staff to make sure that we push the data so that you can see, so you can ask us questions about academics, about individual campuses. Why are they not performing? Why are some other campuses performing? And I'm gonna give you a little taste of that today. I do have principals here that's going to talk a little bit about, um, uh, teacher attendance in their buildings. Uh, it's a huge impact on how well a campus is doing when teachers are present for our kids. Uh, and so they're going to talk a little bit about that. And we're going to, there's a data set that I'm going to put out in front of you as well. So you can see from the top to the bottom of, of, of how teacher attendance is. Ninety-four percent is, is a national average of teachers being, being present for kids across the nation. Uh, and then the ones that, the, the campus principals are here today are at ninety-four of, uh, in that thing. So again, we're gonna, we're, we're trying to, I'm trying to entice you to ask the questions, you know, and make sure that you keep me, myself as a superintendent, you know, accountable for the work that needs to be done, or the issues where we may be having as well, right? Uh, and then campuses need to have support, and our job is to support them and give them what they need to do the job. But then when we give it to them, they need to be able to produce good results for kiddos in our buildings. So thank you for that.
Any other referrals? Um, I do want to say that the Policy Committee has really been pushing out a lot of, um, needed updates. They went to the past, um, since March, I want to say, they've approved, uh, uh, nearly thirty missing or outdated, um, mandated policies from state and federal, um, policies. So, um, kudos to you, Mr. Medina, and, um, and, and, and the Executive Cabinet for really, um, uh, making that push. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of, um, things that we do have to update and do so in a, in a way that doesn't overwhelm the staff as we update policies, right? So the mandated ones have to happen, but then there's other things that we can do in a timely way so that way when we roll it out, it, it's, um, I wouldn't say seamless, but almost seamless. Um, and so, uh, um, that's the work we're going to be doing this year, a lot of policy work. Um, uh, you said September tenth, sorry, for the next, okay, gotcha. Mr. Traver?
And I would venture to guess that puts us in the top ninety-four percent of districts in the state, Mr. Medina.
Maybe. On the next, uh, committee is the Facilities Committee. We have not met over the summer. Um, I, um, we, we will have a meeting. We have it scheduled for next, uh, Wednesday. Um, and, oh, Mr. Garcia has some, um, end of the, or over the summer, what, what they've worked on. I want to, um, just compliment Mr. Garcia's team, um, on, on the work. They're doing a lot with very little staff, um, working nonstop in, in all these buildings to get them ready for Thursday. Um, and, and, um, it's not going unnoticed. Thank you and your team for everything you're doing. Um, and so, uh, but our committee will meet, uh, next, um, Wednesday. Any, you have a referral, Ms. Catherine?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to thank Dr. Avery for pulling together a meeting about B M A. Um, in that meeting, it was Dr. Avery, Dr. Williams, who actually founded B M A. Um, Mr. Carafa, Commander Lip, and Mr. Pyris, uh, were all there. So, um, Mr. Woodson and I had called the meeting because we had a couple of questions about B M A, which were all answered. Um, and some things that, uh, because I know that it's relevant to the new school opening up, that B M A was founded as an individual freestanding school back in two thousand thirteen. They have five hundred and thirty-six kids on the waitlist at B M A. I think that is, that says a lot. It's the only military high school of its kind in the entire state. Out of two hundred and seventy-two students enrolled, two hundred and forty-seven are Bridgeport residents. B M A's graduation rate is ninety-eight point four percent as of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, so they talked about how we need a new building, a new facility for it. The administrative administration is working on securing a permanent, um, place for B M A. It's an open choice program. Students outside of Bridgeport can, um, enroll in B M A through a lottery admission. Uh, there are some talks of possibly making it a magnet school so that B M A would be eligible for more funding sources. And, um, and we talked about, you know, we want to have, um, definitely keep in contact with Congressman Hines, who makes recommendations for military s- students to, um, West Point. And, um, and maybe some field trips to West Point for B M A students. I was thinking maybe that could happen since we have other high schools that are doing field trips to colleges. So that's what I wanted to do. Just thank Dr. Avery for coordinating the team because the team that he coordinated answered every single last one of our questions. Anybody want to email me? Any parents or community members? I can give you more details about it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Dr. Avery, if, if you can get an update at the next facilities meeting on B M A, um, just the, the current situation with the, where the, where the school is going to be held. Um, any other referrals to facilities? All right, so again, that's next Wednesday that we'll be meeting. Um, all right, the super, or K report, uh, do you have anything for K report?
Maybe somebody, maybe somebody who went to the meeting and, um, what is it? Do you want to speak on it?
Yeah, there was a meeting a few weeks back, if anybody wants to speak to that, um, who, who went. All right, the, the cave meeting a couple of weeks back? Mr. Traver?
Yeah, the, uh, Cave made a, uh, we had went to the Cave Summer Workshop. It was a wonderful presentation about, you know, the a lot of what we're going to be talking about tonight, the, the benefit of working together and the benefit of, of developing a positive relationship between the board and the superintendent. They had a pre, joint presentations by, uh, members of the, uh, superintendents and board members, um, and focused on why that was beneficial. So it was, uh, it was a delightful, it was my first time going to the summer, uh, workshop. I know other members of the board have gone in past years. So I found it very, uh, inform, informative. Um, they, I understand that there is a workbook which you ordered from one of the superintendents. Um, we were only allotted one copy to share among all of us, uh, but you, I hope, got multiple copies.
Yes, to the chair. Yes, I, I have a copy of that. We are modifying it right now. Uh, we'll bring that back to the board for consideration. It's just really a, a just a little, a manual for board members, new board members. So as they, as they, uh, transition into the system, they have some idea, uh, some high points, areas that need to, to, to be.
Responsibilities.
Yes.
What your basic rights are and FOIA laws and all that sort of stuff.
Yes.
All your basic stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, yes, they, um, they changed the structure of the meeting. It's the last couple of meetings that I had been through for the summer series. Um, they had us like break out into groups and go into classes, but this time it was different. We stayed in the same room the entire time. Um, and the, um, the president of Cave, um, talked about, um, they did like this exercise called Belonging. And it really made you sit back and think as an adult and as a child, when did you feel like, when did, were you in a situation where you felt like you didn't belong? Um, I like to go and sit at different tables when I go to workshops. I don't like to sit with the people that I work with around this table because I can't learn anything new from them. I feel like I can learn something new from people of other districts, other different perspectives. So I love the attendance there. It was attended, very well attended. The food was great, and I learned a lot.
Thank you. Um, so we'll, um, I know Mrs. Kalbig, um, does forward emails from Cave, so, uh, we'll, we'll look for other, uh, workshops that we can be a part of as well. Um, Dr. Avery's report?
Uh, good evening, everybody. I, I want to, uh, welcome my, our administrators and teachers back. Uh, administrators started a couple, about a week or so ago, two weeks ago, teachers this past week. Uh, this is a great opportunity for us to kind of, uh, start the, the P D process, the school year. I think we had a pretty uh, successful kickoff with, with, with administrators and with teachers. Uh, our students come back on Thursday. Uh, I think we have a, some assignments that we'll put out, uh, for board members and, and district administration going to visit campuses on that day. Uh, so just really a good time for, for us to really kind of, uh, really look at where we are and where we've been and where we're going to be, and where we are now and where we want to be in the next year or so. We still have a lot of work to do, guys, as a community, as a school district, uh, as individuals, you know, that impact this district. It's time for us to kind of stand together, stand united together, and make sure that we, we fight the fight for the children of Bridgeport. Uh, we're still, you know, the funding piece is, is always an issue, but nobody wants to talk about that. You know, and I think it's time, as, as our legislators go into special session at the end of September, beginning of October, we need to fight for funds. Uh, and, and there's a lot of money that the state has. I think it's time for us to rally the troops in a way that's going to be meaningful for us to grab more of those dollars. And so that's what I'm hoping to be able to do as we start this whole new school year. It's important for us to, um, uh, stay focused and not get distracted because I think there's a lot of, you know, people not wanting us to be successful. Uh, but I think some of those people are internal, so we have to be able to kind of, you know, take the distractions out of the way and just keep the main thing, the main thing, and let's keep doing the work. Uh, we have the, the necessary expertise to, to rally the troops and get it done. We just have to be able to stay the truth. I don't want to, you know, rehash previous years. We have to keep doing what we have to do right now. And let's let the data drive the decisions that we make moving forward. And so with my presentation this, this evening, uh, I have the, the opportunity to ask three principals to come join me at the podium today. Uh, Marcy Julian from Blackham, Jackie Simmons from Roosevelt, and Angela Gofada from Skane. These, these, uh, one of the data sources that I gave in your packet over the weekend is the A D A, uh, the average daily attendance for teachers. Uh, and I think it's important that, uh, the board and the community understands and knows that it takes the adults that we pay very good salaries to be in front of our children at all time. I mentioned earlier that ninety-four percent, uh, you know, A D A for teachers across the nation is a very high, you know, uh, goal to obtain and get, uh, and these three ladies in their buildings have, have accomplished that. Uh, so I wanted them to kind of share with you. Let's give a round of applause. And I think it's time for us to showcase principals a little bit when they are doing great things in the work. Uh, the work is difficult. The work is different in Bridgeport Public Schools. Uh, and I think the tenure of these ladies will tell you, they've been here a long time. And they've been trying to make a impact in the children for a long time. And, and I, I thank them, myself, for standing up and, and taking the challenge to keep it moving. And so, uh, I want you guys to share a little bit about how do you, you know, connect teachers and keep teachers focused about working with your children in your building. So, uh, the floor is yours.
Is it? Uh, all right, I guess I'll start. Uh, good evening. I'm Jackie Simmons, Principal of Theater Roosevelt School. This is actually my twenty-ninth year in Bridgeport. Um, hard to believe. So, yeah, a long time. We've all been a long time, but it's honestly the best of, of going. So, um, oddly enough, we all took the same approach. We asked our teachers today what they thought when we were invited, and we found a lot of similarities. Um, the reality is you want to create an environment that teachers want to be, right? That teachers want to come every day. This is our eleventh year, um, over at Theater Roosevelt School. We actually have a teacher that has ten years of perfect attendance. Uh, we're doing something special for him, but I know you're watching, Mr. Clampert, so I'm not telling you. Um, so that's going to be tomorrow. Uh, but very similar to some of the training we had the other day is to honoring the traditions and the rituals and the things that the staff values. Um, whether it's things like Teacher of the Week, uh, we often, we have school climate team meetings, and we make sure that every single month we're doing something to honor the work, not just of what the children do, but what of the teachers do. Um, we push our staffs hard, so making sure, you know, at our school, nobody's missed a prep in ten years because we value the work that they do. Um, we do perfect attendance certificates. We have special parking lots. Um, but some of the key words that came up if we were to do one of those weird Wordle things were, they want to be listened to, they want to be respected, they want to be valued, they want communication, they don't want to guess, and they want to know that you care about them as a person. And that was the very first thing that all my staff said is, we know you care. And so when it comes time for personal days or things of that nature, they will always come to us first and say, does this work for you? Which is remarkable to me, and I, that means so much to me. And so we've really. Which is remarkable to me and I, that means so much to me. And so we've really worked hard, I think, to create an environment. And children and families know that, that when you walk in the door, when they see the smiles on our faces and our teams' faces, that really permeates through the building. And so, um, I I I think I've, I've probably said a lot, but I know that these two ladies can add a whole lot more.
Thirty-one years, but Jackie's older than me. I, I, only because I started as a Piara, anyway. So, um, one of the things she missed, that was a hard act to follow, but basically she hit it, but I I lead by example. I am never, I I take personal days and that is it. I rarely am out sick, but I come to school, I I lead by example. My car is the first one in, last one out. Um, another thing I always make sure I have, open door policy. Open door policy, they know they could come in, and not only open door policy, open weekend policy, I'm a doctor on call. I'm a principal on call. Um, one of my teachers finally passed the foundations test. It was eleven o'clock Friday night. She texted me, I called her. And that's some of the things you have to do to keep teachers. They're my children. And I, if they're, if I'm not good to them, they're not good to our children. So that's kind of my uh philosophy on that. Um, I won't take everything. Angela, you want to add some?
So, hi, I'm Angela Garfalo. Um, this is my thirty-first year in Bridgeport. Um, and the thing is, I started off at Sken. I did my student teaching there. So to go back there to be the um administrator has really, um, it's special to me. But again, it's building, it's mutual respect. That's the main thing. And they feel that I'm the third administrator in five years. So it's just building that trust, knowing, again, open door policy, and again, modeling good attendance. I'm very rarely out too, and they can contact me whenever they need to. And they're there. Sken is a special place. They're family and they support each other.
Thank you, ladies, very, very much. And and what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna send me their their uh their write-ups of of why and how, and we're gonna share these with other principals because we do have principals down in the eighties and in the eighties, you know, uh, that we, they may need some pointers of how and what they do. Uh, and so this is a great way of providing professional development to them, uh, even when they don't know they're gonna get it. So I think it's, uh, and it's their their fellow colleagues that's been in the business a long time. And so being able to share is a is a great way to do that. So I think, thank you, ladies, for uh spending some time with me this this evening. I know it's late. Uh, so I wanted you to, I was gonna put you up first on my report, so thank you again.
Thank you.
If you go back to uh the the first slide, uh, it talks about um chronic absenteeism. And one of the things that is gonna be so, so important, guys, is chronic absenteeism. This is, why are kids not coming to school? Uh, and so when you look at the data report, I mean, I I put it out there for you, but I, what I'm gonna do is summarize some significant, you know, uh, points that I think is very important to each one of these slides. Okay, uh, high points. The Bridgeport Learning Center has sixty-seven point eight percent uh chronic absenteeism. That's a very high level, but when you look at the the kids that they serve, these are our special needs, you know, uh, kids. But I think it's, the other part of that is that we've changed leadership a couple of different times last year as well at BLC. So sometimes you can see that, you know, the data sources that that will uh show within an individual campus data that may contribute to some of that. Uh, one of the lowest campuses with uh absenteeism is High Horizon, uh, at sixteen point nine percent. Uh, and then we have a couple of campuses that have significant, significant increases. Bassett High School rose from thirty-two point two percent in twenty-twenty-one to fifty-three point four percent in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, and you know, Bassett has been through a whole lot of different changes as well. Uh, and so again, but but one of the things that's that's very, very important is that we're gonna, I'm gonna keep this data in front of you because, starting at the beginning of the school year, kids should be coming to school, right? You know, but you still have kids that are so disconnected with coming to a learning environment for whatever reason. And we have to figure out a better way of being able to approach that. Uh, we do have our attendance task force. Uh, you know, it's the LEAP program that's that's funded by the state, uh, that's working through some of those. Uh, we have targeted attendance interventions, really coming back to figure out how and what we can do to uh give principals ideas of how to 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 make those interventions. Uh, again, connecting with the families, uh, looking at family engagement and outreach and how we can do a little bit more of that, uh, it's gonna be huge and working through this. Uh, attendance monitoring systems and early warning protocols. We have some new software that we're gonna be exploring. Uh, you know, to try to figure out what we can do differently and quicker to address these kiddos uh that are at need in these campuses. Uh, in September, where it's gonna be our um attendance awareness month, and we will be highlighting the importance of getting kids to school uh in September, the whole month of September is our attendance awareness month. Uh, really kind of be working on trying to uh make sure that it's out in the public. We have little campaigns that's gonna go out to address uh those uh those areas. Mr. Traver?
Ask questions. Did you want to wait?
Let's kind of, for this one, let's wait to the end. I think then I can kind of, you know, I can get my notes together as you speak and I can kind of work through and getting some of the concerns and questions or even some clarity if you want that as well. And I have staff here that if I can't answer, they will be able to answer you as well. Um, let's go down to district enrollment. Uh, it's the third slide, I'm thinking. Uh, the district currently serves nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-three students, where the majority of those students are in elementary schools. Uh, some of the highlights, the elementary enrollment is thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four. The high school enrollment is five thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, the magnet total is four thousand one hundred and sixty-one, and we split those out. Elementary magnet enrollment is two thousand six hundred and forty-nine. High school uh magnet enrollment is one thousand five hundred and twelve. Um, when you look at some of the other subgroups, you know, uh, in in that group, special education enrollment is three thousand eight, uh, three thousand eight hundred and one students. Our MLL uh enrollment population is five thousand five forty-seven. Uh, and then free and reduced lunch, uh, uh, you know, numbers is fourteen thousand uh nine hundred and four. Uh, the reduced lunch count is three thousand, where these students pay a reduced cost for their lunches, three thousand six hundred and thirty-five students. And then paid lunches, students that uh their families are able to pay for their lunches, is that six hundred and four students that are actually, um, um, you know, are able to pay for their lunches. Um, some of the steps that's gonna be implemented, we do have a new enrollment center that will be able to kind of capture, you know, real-time data to kind of help parents as they come to the district to enroll. Uh, outreach to families, you know, uh, for early registration. We do a lot of that with our special education child find and our child nutrition area to where we're trying to get these kids at an early age to get them in our schools. Uh, and then the recruiting that we're trying to do with our magnet schools and specialized programs, really enhancing those programs to attract more families to the programs. And and then having a campaign around being able to, um, you know, entice community of families to be able to tap into uh our school system. Uh, the last document here, which I'm I'm very, very proud of, is the teacher vacancy. Um, and go to the teacher vacancy, guys.
The last page.
The teacher vacancy, this is as as a Friday, and I know those numbers have changed. And uh, Dr. Sienna, do you have an update on that? No, I think this is the, this is one as a Friday. We have forty-one vacancies in the T, in in the district. And I can tell you, board, we had a hundred and thirty teaching vacancies, you know, in previous years. And to to have, I I think we had, how many special ed vacancies last year? From last year, Michelle? How many vacancies for special ed teachers did we have last year? Thirty-nine. And as a, as a Friday, we have two special ed vacancies. So what that means is that we, we've been pounding it, trying to make sure that we get certified teachers in front of our children. Uh, and so we're very, very proud of that. Uh, having only two, our goal is to have zero, but we have until Thursday. So I know we're, I think there is a resource classroom uh in a a RISE classroom that we still need to have a certified teacher in. Uh, and so we're, we're, you know, we're really trying to, trying to hit that hundred percent. And so, um, I will, you know, work with Dr. Sienna to be able to make sure that we can, you know, get those two two vacancies filled. Again, we've just been doing a lot of, you know, aggressive campaigning to try to make sure that we recruit. Uh, we did open interviews. Uh, we're gonna keep all those things open because we need to get a pool of people that that is wanting to work. I think because of the calmness of what has happened over the last six months, people are trying to say they want to come and help. They want to do what we can to support our children and put in support the district. Uh, so I think that's very important. But we still have a high vacancy uh area of art and science. We have thirteen art teacher available availabilities right now in the district and then twelve science vacancies. So those are very high needs areas for the state as well. Um, and it's just, you can't, you know, get those science teachers because they can go in outside fields, the medical field or whatever, and get paid a lot more than what they have to come, you know, to the teaching side of it, right? Uh, again, we have a great partnership with the universities. We're trying to do, and they are also coming up with innovative ways to uh get teachers certified in uh in in content areas to to fill those those voids of, um, um, you know, those high needs areas, mass science, social studies, bilingual, special ed, those types of fields. Uh, again, and then looking at, you know, what type of incentives that we can give, especially special education teachers. One of the things that the state um notified us about is any, any, any high needs area teacher that is retired can come back out of retirement to become teachers uh in those high needs areas like special ed or somebody high mass science, whatever. So I think we have like five or six teachers that came out of retirement. But what that means is that you're paying them at that top step as well, which I would rather have a retired teacher in and a certified that have the experience to deal with our children, support our children, than not having any of them. So we have about six of them that came back. When we, we put a, 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 a a Connecticut-wide email to all retired teachers, hey, if you want to come back to Bridgeport, we will accept you back in with a full salary in addition to keeping your uh your retirement as well. Uh, so that's a win-win right there. So, uh, so we, again, we had six people take us up on it and uh we're really, really grateful for those teachers that gave us and that and that's willing to work with us uh to help our kids. Uh, and at this time, I'll take any referrals or questions that you may have.
Mr. Traver? Can you, can you put your microphone on?
What's the what column?
What's the middle column?
Bacon.
Oh, one, one RISE special ed, one resource special ed. Uh, there are seven bilingual. Uh, T-Sol is a bilingual position and then one elementary.
What's, what's the middle column? A sol, miss.
These are the vacancies.
The number of positions in the category, open position in the categories to your left.
So the two sped vacancies, one in resource, one in RISE.
So it's just a subcategory. So the top green spot that you see?
Ah, I got you. I got you. Yes, I see now.
They're all special ed, then the blue and bilingual, and the elementary. We just broke it down.
Yep, I see it now. The colors didn't catch me. Um, and, um, you and I have talked about, it's important for us to publicize this sped issue um in any way that we can.
And we are, we are gonna, we're gonna highlight.
Using the, the thirty-nine number from last year, uh, in the post. Um, so I think that it is important. So I hope the Connecticut Post is paying attention um when they look at this um tomorrow or the next day. That we only have two vacancies in sped. Um, so I want to go back to the question I asked on the first page, chronically absent. Um, and I want to ask if, um, it's possible for my committee meeting on Wednesday to have a monthly breakdown of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Monthly?
Yep. I'm I'm asking how big a deal that is, PJ. I see you shaking your head like this, and I get it. If it's too big a pain in the then we could do it for the next meeting. But I'm curious, because what I notice in this data is that it goes up from previous years. And I'm just curious about the why. Um, and it it may or may not be, it doesn't have to be in two days. If if that's just too big, if if it's one of those things that you can click your magical fingers on the keyboards and crank it out, then it would, I would be curious to look at it Wednesday. If it's not one of those things, you can click your magical fingers on the keyboards and it it takes a little work, then this is too busy a week to do that. And so I'll hold it for the next meeting. Um, but I would like to look at it Tuesday, Wednesday, or at the next meeting to see, because i- it is weird to look at how many of these go up um in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. And then the question becomes why and when? And so I, the monthly is the first question that hits my mind, is did that rise occur at the end of the year, over the year, the beginning of the year? When did that occur?
Yeah, Mr. Traver, can I, can I answer that question for you? I think it's important for this is, this is one of those data things that's gonna come before you every single month. So you're gonna get it because I want you, if, I want you guys to help us making sure. When you talk about absenteeism for kids and absenteeism for teachers in the classroom, those two things go hand in hand. If the teacher's not there, the kid's not there, nobody getting educated, right? And that's what is happening a lot of times as well. So the monthly report will be given to you. I don't know if I'm gonna, we we have so many things to get done between to to tonight and Wednesday, so if we can get it back to you.
At the end of the month, next, next meeting is fine. I get that. I get that, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I do want to see next year, last year, in a monthly report. Uh, it's, next meeting is fine. That's fine. I'm not, I'm not in any rush. I'm just curious. I get that we're gonna look at it
progress. Moving forward.
You know, for the rest of this year, as we go through the year, but I'm just having curiosity about what, why this this unique bump occurred last year. Um, as I look at this last year, even High Horizon that you mentioned, it took a bump up. There are eleven percent, seven points, then they bump up to sixteen point nine. Um, so, you know, I'm just, that is, it's just a curiosity as to why that occurred for High Horizon as well as everybody else. Um, I do agree with you about teacher attendance. I'm not disagreeing. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Hughes.
I can add, there were three uh distinct things that stand out in my mind that happened last year.
Oh, I.
One, one was the fall.
I hear you. I hear you.
One was, can you hear me now? One was the fall with the violence that, the the violence threats to the schools. The second one was in January with the ICE issue, and at the end of the year with our half-days. We had a half, a week of half-days, which we learned is probably not gonna happen again because we know with half-days, student absenteeism increases.
That's why I want to look at it. All those things occurred to me. Unfortunately, a few other things occurred to me too.
Yeah, so so, Mr. Traver, the way the state does it is every month they have what's called their monthly attendance pool that we give them. Uh, it's usually a week after the month ends. So the state does not allow us to go back in to their system and update anything. So if there's a mistake in attendance, for instance, um, I gave Mr. Traver an absence when I wasn't supposed to give Mr. Traver an absence. They don't allow us to go back and update previous month absences. It is what it is at that time. During our training in the summer, uh, when we're training the clerical staff, we make it clear to them how important it is to make sure the attendance is right. We also let the administrators know the importance of capturing that attendance because we don't have a chance to go back in and update it again. Once it's submitted, that's it. Some of it, and I will tell you that we do find with chronic absenteeism, is that some of it is due to the fact that um, some of our kids, especially in the September or the early months, it's getting them in. Uh, there's still no shows, but they're on the register, they're on the list. And our job is to call them. So by state law, once someone registers, even in the summer, when school starts, we have to go through the process of our due process of trying to get that child back into school. They get absences. So that attendance at this point, we start taking attendance on them even though they're not in. That's also for a child who registers but does not have their immunizations or their physical. They get enrolled in the class and get rostered. But those attendance keep going on that child. So if it takes them two weeks, that child has two weeks of attendance of absences for their attendance. So it's not always fair when you're looking at some of the chronic absenteeism. But we found that it is going up in the past years. The percentages are going up slightly. And I don't have an answer for that. But the reality is, I know we have teams together. We, we know what to look at. We're looking at clustered data. In other words, those children who have been absent for seven days in a row. And we could account for that because we know some, somebody was either on vacation or they were out sick with, with the flu. But it's those sporadic absences, those children who are out every other week or every two weeks, maybe a Monday, a Friday, maybe a Tuesday on the week. Those are the ones that you really have to look into. Because right now we have a lot of those kids who are sporadically just taking absence days throughout the years.
And, and, and I, one, remember, I, I understand this in some degree because I taught for twenty years. We had the, the long-term winter vacation students. We had the, and I worked truancy actually in New Haven in the seventies. Some, I, I'm familiar with a lot of different problems we run into. That's part of why I'd like to look at the monthly data to see what patterns we see. But I do understand at the beginning of the year, there's also students on the roster, on the, you know, who are enrolled that end up not being enrolled. That we have to wait and see if they're really coming back. For whatever reason, you mentioned some of them, but there are other reasons I remember too. So I, I get it and I'm not, if that's why I ask, in, in all seriousness, if it's work, I'll wait. I just peak my curiosity with the data you put before me. So, but if it's work right now, I am recognize this as a holaciously busy week. So let's wait till the next end of the month. And on the teacher one, I, I, I mean, I, I couldn't agree with you more, keeping the teachers here. I remember we did a comparison of the Bridgeport's district teachers to the charter school teachers and there was no comparison. Just on district-wide to the charter school. The, our attendance rate was so much higher. So just even there, that's but here we're looking at each school and, you know, I'm, I was proud to see two Blackham school teachers there standing up there right there. Not just one principal, but two, two colleagues of mine from Blackham who know what it's like. So I, I think that's very important.
I think the other thing, Mr. Traver, is that we're not only going to have, you know, teachers, I mean, administrators that are high on the chart, we're going to bring principals that are at the bottom of the chart and what are you going to do differently? So we're going to, we're going to kind of make sure we mix it up a little bit. I think that's important to keep things, you know, you know, interesting and, and making sure that we support all levels. You know, I think they have to sometimes, you know, come and talk about their, their buildings and the issues they may be having. And what else could we do to support them in that as well? So we're going to kind of mix that up. The data piece is a huge thing and I meet with principals, I mean, on every Friday, groups of them. And they're going to be justifying because I'm putting data in front of them. Tell me what's going on in your building. Why is the data the way it is? What else can we do to help you?
And I've not heard anything to the contrary, so I want to emphasize your last point about as long as we're being positive in those discussions.
Absolutely.
Because that's the point of what we're trying to do is what can we do to help you improve on that problem and help you, support you in improving that, that number.
And that's the purpose of getting.
Not to punish you, but to
Absolutely.
But to, how can, what can, what can we do to help?
And that's, and that's the point, the point of providing, you know, the principal that's high on the list to go down and support the ones on it. It's because I think it's, it's more receptive when they are doing it instead of B or my team is doing it. So we, we, we'll do a combination of it all. It's important. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Woodson.
Um, yes, one question, Dr. Avery, um, maybe two. Bilingual teachers, does, does that mean that they teach a second language or they're just bilingual?
I'm letting, I'm letting Mars clarify that. It's, it's different.
We have two types of bilingual teachers. We have bilingual programs in many of our schools that are K-two, where we have children who do speak Spanish and other languages where they teach that class. They're not necessarily teaching Spanish, but they will be, you know, getting the children prepared to enter into grade three in these schools where English is the predominant language of instruction. We also have at Battalion a biliteracy pilot program whereby we've got bilingual teachers that are teaching both ELA in English and ELA in Spanish. And so the objective is for our kids to get the biliteracy seal upon graduation in high school.
Okay, thank you. Because, excuse me. But, you know, I, I've been reading a lot about education and a, and a lot that's been keeping the kids away from school, the bilingual kids is the, the language barrier. You know, a lot of these kids aren't able to communicate. The parents aren't able to communicate because, you know, they're, you know, of course from a different country. And it's causing problems in the school. You know, the, the kids are getting frustrated, the parents are getting frustrated and, you know, they're, they're just not coming to school just because of that. So I think us being really proactive and hiring bilingual teachers, if that's what we're doing is a, is an excellent thing. And getting administrators or people inside these centers that are able to commun, that are able to communicate with, with people that speak a second language is very, very important to getting our, our attendance up and stuff like that, you know, so. Um, and one more question about about our, you know, just, just about, about our attendance, you know, new schools help bring in the, the, you know, students. So if we keep, you know, this, this, you know, replacing these schools and, and, and building new schools, kids, I think we're definitely going to see kids coming to school more. So as long, as long as we keep it up and we keep doing a good job building these schools, we, we will see attendance go up. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Great points. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. Mrs. Callahan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. When you, in a chronic absenteeism, could you define chronic absenteeism for everybody, please? What, what makes you chronically absent?
I think it has to, to be more than ten or more absences, you know, over a period of time. I don't have that specific definition, you know, in front of me, but I think it's, you know, do you have it? Someone have it? Okay, PJ.
Yeah. So, so the definition for chronic absenteeism is if you're absent ten or more percent based on your membership days. So what that means is probably around eighteen, nineteen absences, you become chronically absent. Those absences are excused and unexcused absences. That's what makes up someone, a student being chronic. There, there are a couple of caveats to chronic absenteeism. One is that they base it off membership. And what membership is basically the number of days that you're in that school. So if you're there fifty days, it's based off your chronic absenteeism or the days that you're absent based off of the fifty days. If you're more absent ten or more percent, then you're chronically absent for the school year. The one thing the state does is it also, if you go from one school to another school, so school A to school B, your absenteeism, let's say you were chronically absent in school A. What happens is once you go to school B, your chronic absenteeism gets wiped out. But if you go back from school B, back to school A again, then they take those absences from school A and they add them on to any more absences that you would have at school A.
So, so yeah, I'm follow up on that one. So, right, school A student is chronically absent because they got issues. We live in a very transitory system. So the student goes to school A and is absent another twelve times, thirteen times. So he's counted again, he or she is counted again as chronically absent?
Yeah, so if they go to school A and let's say they were absent ten times, they go to school B, they start fresh. They go back to school A again, then that ten absences comes back plus how many more that you're absent until the end of the year?
And that chronic absenteeism stays with the school even if the student leaves?
Yes.
Can't go back.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's one question. And as far as the, you mentioned that you're going to have the great performing schools and the underperforming schools as far as chronic absenteeism. When, when you're saying you're going to bring them in, do you mean you're going to bring in the lower performing schools to yourself or you're going, or you're going to put them on the hot seat over here? Because I don't know if that's.
Well, you got the hot, the hot seats right here in the data because the data done lies. So you can, you, each board member will know which, which campuses. I probably could like categorize it from top to bottom so that you can have an easier, quick look at. But what, what I, what I'm doing is I'm trying to communicate with principals, you know, but I'm also trying to make sure keeping data sources at the forefront of what, what's happening. So chronic absenteeism, I'll have maybe six principals in the room, all different levels, all different, different, you know, you know, points on this chart. And then we talk about what, what's working good school and some school was working and I already know which one needs support. So it's a combination of that. We have a monthly administrative meeting. So we have sharing, share points with groups of principals getting up and sharing with their colleagues on what they're doing on certain topic areas. So there's a different varieties of ways to do it.
Yeah, not, yeah, I was just picturing up there, why is your school like sixty-eight percent chronically absent? What, what could you do better and like have a spotlight like everybody was clapping and maybe everybody will be booing at the next one or something.
I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily say you have to be, when principals see their names listed top to bottom, that, that's encouragement in itself. And that's what we're kind of trying to produce is, you know, you, you can be, you know, it's all about making sure that we, we're all in this together. If one kid fails, all of us fail, right? So we got to be supportive in that way. So being able to kind of have that communication piece around it and talking points around it, that's the best way to do it.
All right, next I want to move on to enrollment. This is probably the best answer by Mr. Carapie. Probably you said these questions by now. And, and just through you, Dr. Avery, of course, the enrollment. Well, through you, Dr. Avery, I would like to see a comparative number year over year. Are we up or down over from last year?
We can, we can.
Right now, we're still enrolling, so we're, we're down at this point. But usually by the start of the year, we even out. But, but what we'd like to do is we do have reports coming out the first day of school. We can get you those and compare them to last year so you have that. Think that would make sense?
We'll provide that, that attendance thing because every day it changes. So we'll give you the first couple of weeks of school. We'll send it out to you guys every week so you can kind of track it. But can sometimes after September one or after Labor Day, more kids will come. So you'll, so after that, that week after Labor Day, you'll see it probably go back up again as well.
And our numbers lock in in October.
October first.
October.
Okay, and final question on enrollment, percentage of free and reduced price lunch. Where do, where do we stand in that percentage wise compared to, compared to last year? Because that is a significant component of the formula.
Sure. So I can speak of that. Last year we were at eighty-seven point five percent. The year before that, we were at eighty-six point two. So we're increasing, and this year we have a goal of eighty-eight percent. If we can get there, that's our goal this year. So again, everything locks in these data points in October for October first.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Schmarin.
I have just two points on this report. In terms of the attendance, I'm kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Traver said in terms of having the data annually. Kind of want to go a step further and ask if it can be graphed so that we can see over time.
Like the monthly change and.
Yes, the changes so that then we can see, okay, we're spiking in January, oh, there might be a flu issue. If not, we can really try to analyze the data in a way where we can provide support wherever needed. Then the second item is around the sped teachers. I'm very pleased to see that we only have two vacancies and wanted to know if the fourteen teachers that were approved to go through that summer program, if that's part of the reason why the numbers are low? Or there's less sped vacancies?
They filled some of those vacancies because they are certified teachers. And we do that every year, but we added some additional ones, remember? You know, the board approved for us to get another round of them. They're all full filled. And so, yeah, that had a lot to do with it. And that was a great decision by the board to be able to go work that. So those are the types of things that we're having to, you know, if we invest a little money in getting more teachers, then it's going to pay off like this, as it's been doing. So again, I think a lot of the universities have tried to do some innovative things to try to get more people certified as well. And then I think the state of Connecticut is changing, you know, the requirement. Connecticut had one of this, one of the, the more stringent, you know, ways are certification processes for teachers to become a teacher. And they, I think they're loosening that up a little bit in order to get more people to step into the role.
Excellent. That's kind of what I wanted to hear, that because of this program, it's been deemed effective that we were able to reduce our numbers. So thank you.
Mr. Medina. Can you get your mic up?
And I want to touch, starting in that section where Ms. Maritza, Mr. Meta, he met us ended on that Crec program, C R E C, just to confirm, how many, the Crec program, C R E C, the special ed program that we had, you asked for a second round, which was the twenty that we voted on to push for that special.
You're talking about the Sacred Heart one or the?
I just know a C R E C, correct.
I don't know about correct, but we, we, we can provide you, we can provide you that data. It came from, I think Dom presented to the board in, in requests some additional teachers to be hired through the, no, Mr. Bronson, Michael Bronson, you know, made the presentation to the board, Mike Bronson. So we'll bring that update to you and give you, you know,
How many?
Individuals on what subject areas they're teaching. Chris, we'll get Mike to provide that for us.
So as far as we have the data right now as of today, there are forty-one vacant positions. Every other position has a certified teacher.
Yes.
I have a question that came up through some communications and dialogue with other people. And maybe it's for you, maybe it's not. When there is a permanent sub hired into a classroom, is that permanent sub certified through the district or through, what's the company again? Kelly Services, are those certified or they're not certified? I understood that it wasn't, but I was hearing other communication that came.
Subs aren't considered a certified teacher. Now, there could be a, a teacher that's certified that is a sub, but there's no way that we would even know. Because that, why would you be a sub when you can get paid a lot more money being a certified teacher? But some people like the flexibility of not being a full-time committed person to the classroom, you know, but they have the certifications. They just want extra, extra pay. So it just depends, you know. They just want extra, extra pay. So this depends, um, you know, Kelly knows that on the backside, but we don't necessarily. Cause they're just a sub. So they're coming in a day or two and then they go back and go from there. So.
Okay, I just wondered that because they told me that the permanent subs are certified subs. And I said, that's not.
Not necessarily. Permanent sub means they're there for a certain amount of days and then they become permanent.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
What I understood too. Okay. Thank you. Um, and then I know, I did you.
I think there's a typo on that.
Okay, that's a typo?
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure. Okay. Got it. You wanna state it or you want me to?
You can state it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so on the, on the, on the packet, there was, and and in his presentation. The packet has the thing, so total reduced, uh, students on our packet data, it says it's six hundred and four. But it's actually is three thousand six hundred and thirty-five as stated by, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Avery. And then the paid is stated on the report as three thousand six hundred and fifty-five is actually six hundred and four. Was was stated by Dr. Avery. And I just had a question about that, cause it, it was contradicted to this, to, to it. And that is all for me. Thank you, Adam Chair. Who, sorry. Yeah, no, that is.
Just a couple of, uh, quick things. I. Just to be clear for Mr. Medina's sake, uh, there may be certified teachers, like as a retiree, I'm a certified teacher. I could decide I wanted to sub a few days a week to make a little extra money. That could happen.
That could happen.
So that could happen.
And I, I stated it that way.
Yes.
Okay, I've been saying, yeah.
So. When I was becoming a teacher, I subbed. I didn't have a certification. What is a permanent sub? Are you referring to long-term subs?
Same thing.
What we used to? Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear. I wanted.
Different verbiage.
I wanted to check your verbs.
Permanent sub, yeah. Long-term sub, permanent sub.
Um, and, um, uh, the, um. The one other thing I wanted to mention was on that. We, I noticed that one of the largest areas of of unfilled, unfilled. Uh, they can see for art teachers. Um, and I, I just wanna comment that I have heard frequently from our teachers. We have not raised the rate of reimbursement for supplies. For our teachers for fifteen or more years, maybe twenty. So just on our ra, I wanted to put it on our radar. That that is a problem for us. Um. It just gets lost in the budget of overwhelming budget of all the other things we have to deal with. But they get the same amount of money to buy supplies that they got fifteen, twenty years ago. It's a disincentive.
But remember, that thirteen is not just art teachers. It's art. The seven, yes, the seven.
Now that you, now that I understand the color coding system, the seven, but it it just struck me when I saw art teachers there that. That's an area, that's an area of complaint that I've heard frequently, art teacher. Just with a side, aside here in this discussion. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Quick comment. Um, kinda started thinking the reason why sped numbers, not the sole reason why. But sped numbers went down was because of that program incentivizing. Certified teachers to look at their credentials. I'm wondering if we can do something similar to that for math and science. Um, so just food for thought, uh, food for thought.
And 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 there are, there are things that the board could do to consider that, but you have to have the finance or means to do it. And you also have to get the agreement of the teacher union to be able to do that. Because it it distinguish, you're giving certain teachers an incentive to teach that area. And and not all of teachers have the availability to get this, the incentive. You know, some, certain states will do that. They can do it without, but a bargaining stay is hard to do. So you have to go and get an MOU or whatever to the teacher union. And so you can't just. The board just can't do it because the union will fight you against, fight against that. So there's ways that we can work through that. Those programs are coming from the university level. So they're getting support from the university side and the school district side say. If you do this, you teach for us for two or three years and that's how you get away. You're not giving the money directly to the student. You're helping pay for their schooling. It's a difference. And so the union said, okay, you're gonna help my, my potential member. Get a certification so I can keep them. And and that's, any teacher can do it. They have, they have math, science, social studies. You know, positions that they can go through the program with, but but technically special ed is the one because it's high needs. So yes, there's, and we're working with the universities all the time to, to help think through some of those innovative options. Uh, and we'll continue to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
New business. Um, the first item on agenda is approval of proposed workman's compensation stipulation with Wallace Gratchell. Uh, this is item for executive session and we have, um, a workman's comp attorney, Yeoman's here. Uh, so if we go in executive session, it'll be with the board members, our attorney. HR? No, no? Okay. With our attorney.
And.
And Mr. Nick. So is there motion? Okay, moved by Mr. Traver, seconded by Mr. Bennett. All in favor to go in executive session? Any opposed? All right. Uh, we're gonna go into the conference room in the office. All right, we're back with executive session. Motion.
Move to approve the motion as discussed in executive session.
Moved by Mr. Traver, Mrs. Calvic.
Oh, yeah. I would like to offer a little amendment. Move, um, move to authorize the attorney to settle the workman's compensation case as discussed in executive session.
So, been amended. Is there a second for the amendment? Second by Mr. Bennigan. So the new, all in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? So, uh, let's vote on the new motion as amended. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it's approved. Thank you, Mr. Owens. The next item on agenda is the approval of.
Emotions.
The Bridgeport Adult Education Lease Agreement Renewal at four eighteen Cassuth Street. No, okay, it's been, uh, most, the, the motions are made to approve the. Bridgeport Adult Education Lease Agreement Renewal at four eighteen Cassuth. Is there a second? Is there any, uh, debate or discussion on that? Mr. Bennigan? Do you have a direct phone?
I, I know we talked about this, but I wanna be sure because, um, they will still change the date. Cause I see in the package that they still the same.
What date?
They had, they say something, uh, two thousand twenty-four.
No, that wasn't.
Uh, because I see in the package.
It's supposed to be that.
Okay, I just wanna be sure. Okay, I just want to be sure. All right. Thank you.
Any further debate on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Hannah's coming first. You have somebody for this one?
Yes.
Approved, the next item is the approval of the fiscal year 2526 Family Resource Center Grant Application to the State Department of Education for Sisabro Talia School, Dunbar School, and Roosevelt School. Moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by Mr. Bennigan. Any questions on this for the presenters? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's passed. Next is the approval of the Expelled Students for University School Agreement. Moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by Mr. Bennigan. Any discussion on the contract? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next item is approval of the subcontractor services agreement for Bridgeport Prosperous and Bridgeport Board of Education. Moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by Mr. Bennigan. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That one passes as well. I don't know about this one, though. The approval of the draft budget planning document is the next item. Yeah.
Draft.
Good. Dr. Avery.
One of the requirements of my staff and myself and Nestor is to work with the state technical assistance team to provide the board with a budget manual. Mainly, it's, when you look at it, you know, mainly, it's just the responsibilities of principals and directors, the internal staff regarding how they are to interact with, you know, the team to develop a budget. Most of it is timelines, you know, these are the timelines that are given to us by the city of Bridgeport. And we just kind of integrated our timelines in the process. And we really wanted the board to kind of chew on it and then provide some additional conversations around it. There is a lot, there's, there's a glossary of terms when it comes to some of the terms that we use to develop budget. You're talking about codes in the budget process. There's acronyms in the back, there's processes, how to evaluate the budget, there is an entry of how we train administrators to use Munis. Is the software program that we use for finances in the district. Again, it's a draft and I just wanted an opportunity to, it had to be presented to the board. It does not have to be approved by the board. But we would like to just engage you in the conversation of good, bad, or indifference of the document in order to get, try to get it finalized, to get it to the, to the state whenever you have time to add value to it. So, it's not anything that, you know, Nestor and I and the team went through and provided, you know, they provided us a sample of what it might look like. And then we just kind of took that and used it for a guide for us to help you guys formulate your minds around the year-long, it is a year-long process for developing the budget, you know, but it's specifically giving the responsibilities and the timelines for everybody involved. So, again, that's what this is. So. Any discussion?
Mr. Calvic.
No, you pretty much answered the question that this is a draft subject to revisions. I'm willing to accept a draft subject to revision when we got a little more time to look at it and have further discussions because we do have an extensive agenda this evening. And this is going to bear more than a five-minute discussion, probably.
Mrs. Damar, I'm in.
So, I had a few questions and I ended up reading this twice because I feel like the lens I was reading it from, I think I was reading it incorrectly or different thoughts in my head. So, I wanted to ask, is this something that will be public facing? Is the intent for this to be public facing?
Absolutely, because it has dates and timelines and things like that, you know, and full transparency to the community. I think they didn't even know how and what the process is. So, I think it's important to make sure this is public facing. But remember, guys, everything that we do cannot be public facing because we have work to do and we need a guide to be able to do the work. But I think for, for, for this purpose, I think we can easily be able to put this on our webpage and have it public facing to be, because it's not giving any, they're not giving the details of the budget process, right? It's just the process. And that's full transparency and that's what the audit said. A lot of the things that you see are just, you know, geared towards making sure that we're complying with the audit. And a lot of the things that's in here will help us meet those checklists of meeting those goals as well.
Thank you. I do have a few other comments and I can follow up over email as well.
Loving it.
Itemizing, but face value, there was on page one, item number four, on the third line, it indicates that if requests are not properly submitted, that they will go unanswered. And I'm wondering if we can just deny them and let people know, give them the feedback, hey, this is the reason why it was denied, to kind of have that feedback loop. So that, you know, people aren't expecting an answer and not knowing, kind of sitting in limbo. So, that was a thought there. And then the second one, this is like super minor, but on page two, I noticed November 28th, 2025. I want to make sure that we're instilling work-life balance. That's the day after Thanksgiving. So, we don't want to push forward a timeline thing, almost making it appear that people have to come to work, go be with your families. So, I'm proposing December 1st as that due date. On page five, and this, this might be, oh, sorry, I didn't see your hands. Do you want to work on after Thanksgiving?
Mr. McCall, can you just put the mic on?
The only thing I would like to clarify here, some of those dates are pretty much driven by the city, the city charter. So, the date there doesn't really, it's not binding, meaning some of them say first Tuesday of, of April.
Yeah.
So, it's the time to meet the deadline. Come next fiscal year, first Tuesday of April might not be Wednesday. So, it might be Thursday or Tuesday. So, the date you see there will change every, almost, most of them will change every year because they have to follow the city, the city deadline or guideline or the city start, you know, the city ordinance.
Gotcha. I was thinking that's, that's the timeline. That is the deadline.
No, it changes because by city ordinance, the mayor has to turn a budget in to the council the first Tuesday of April. So, whatever day that first Tuesday of April turns in every year, next year, the date might be different. So, we're just going to change the date, a day before, a day after.
So, then I might suggest on the timeline, on or to add on or about, so you're not stuck to a specific date.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'll conclude with this comment. But on page six, I did add a few additional steps. And it was more so because I kind of thought that maybe we should also add when the legislation session ends and how internally we're working to develop the gap-saving measures and then get those approved by the board and then also develop that priority list that if we do end up getting additional money, we can get that to you guys and approved before school ends, ahead of the school year. So, ha, added those bits there. And that is it for, for me. I'll itemize this for you, Dr. Avery.
You, you'll put it in writing for me?
Yes.
Thank you. I like. We'll do that for you. Thank you.
Mr. Traver. Can you put your mic, hold on?
All right. I want to repeat what I said in committee, that I applaud this effort. It, it really is nice to see it all laid out. As you know, we had a problem last year with the budget not being given to us until the end of March. In the February, sorry. And that was obviously extraordinarily late. And as we raised concerns over this, the budget was not presented to us until way after it should have been historically. So, this makes it clear. And contrary to statements that were made earlier, we were not allowed to speak at the finance committee meetings. At that point, when the budget was presented to us, we were forbidden from speaking at those meetings.
Hold it on.
It's on point, Madam Chair.
Move on.
It's on point.
Move on or we end the conversation.
Thank you. Well, you allowed a misstatement to be perpetrated here. And so.
May I interject for a moment instead of going back and forth? Move on and go back.
I, I, I tried to avoid doing this and when I raised it with you off. Excuse me.
Point of order. Point of order. Okay. So, let, let, let's get back to like the current, why, like, let's do current, let's focus on the, the current situation.
Well, I'm complimenting, I'm complimenting the fact that we have a clear process spelled out for this year. And I admire us seeing that. And I did say at the last meeting, and I want to repeat it, and I think it's consistent with what Ms. Esther Mary Imanis said, that the on or about concept of preparing with, for the state and major grants that you have at the top of page five needs to be moved up. So, I want to repeat that here on the record. We really do want to be meeting with state legislators at the same time that we're putting the budget together. They are preparing their legislative agenda around the holidays. So, we want to be meeting with them around the holidays. Our delegation. So, I think that that needs to be fit into this process, that we want to sit down with our delegation to get them focused on what our needs are going to be. And then, as it says on page five, you know, we're going to be monitoring federal and state, you know, what's going on. But prior to that, as I said before, that really is January, February, as the governor lays out his budget and legislative committees start to do their work in February. We're going to be monitoring that with the help, hopefully, of our delegation, having met with them in January, if you will, February, January, I'm sorry, December, January.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Whenever the board feels the date they prefer, they can just add it on, I'll just add it in between.
Yeah, I, I just.
Like, just the date, pick whatever dates, whatever time is fine with.
I just think that's an important part of what we're doing. And that is where you've got in here, obviously, because you're well aware of it, what work we're going to be doing with the city leaders. We also want to be doing that with the state leaders.
Absolutely.
Because that's where the bulk of our money comes from.
Yep. Yep.
So. But otherwise, as I started initially last week and this week, I really do applaud this effort.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
Calvic.
Yeah, well, I was going to hold off since we started discussing anyway. Yeah, a couple of points I got, I mentioned the committee. I would like to see a little more Board of Eds, but I would like to see a little more Board of Education on there as far as the community forums. It's gone back and forth between superintendent-led forums, but the board has been like intricately involved. When things are mentioned about the Board of Ed, should be Board of Ed, should be Board of Ed in conjunction with the superintendent. The best community forums we've had have been in conjunction, joint, joint between the finance committee and the superintendent run, called as a meeting and promoted and the interaction between the superintendent and bouncing off board members. Because there's certain things board members could say and certain things the superintendent can say. And that's the best for having, because he had, as far as Mr. Traver's comments about the legislations, I agree 100% wholeheartedly. We definitely got to try to catch them before they go up to Hartford, because once they go up to Hartford, they're busy, they're done, and they're not, they're not looking back. So, we should try to get that done early in the process, even if we don't have a total 100% clear picture of our budget. We will have a picture of what our proposed escalated costs are and some semblance of range with maybe a $5 million strike in this. That's I think that's all I got. Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
For, for board members, if you, if you guys can, you know, put your eyes back on the document again and just bullet point me the things that you would like to see added. Because what I can do is I can add those things. Say, say you want to see four community forums, you know, around the budget, you know, through the process. You can say, give me four, give me three, whatever, then we can put those in within that, whatever. So, the recommendations is if you get those, I would like to try to get this updated because the state's wanting an updated copy. But I wanted you to have an opportunity to give me some feedback on it. Again, if it's, if it's next month, at the next month's board meeting, that's fine. If it's at the next finance committee meeting, that's fine as well. I mean, it just, just give me some time to get your pointers and the changes to it, and then I'll update it.
Right. Yeah, mention, sorry, just another, another quick point. Yes, so, so far, it seems like there's a consensus on almost everything that was, almost everything that's said, there's just a problem with updating the document as we go along is if there's a disagreement, if there's a disagreement between board members.
With you.
If there's a disagreement between board members on certain issues that we want changed, it would take a vote, five, four, six, seven, six, three. But it sounds like so far, everything has a consensus that's been said so far. So, I think it might be safe, but as far as the present documents, if there's an issue of contention on any of them, they would probably need to be voted on just to be codified rather than just putting, like, if even it has a suggestion that I disagree with and needs to be debated, same with Mr. Traver, same with my own suggestions and debating, voting upward down or whatever, have you? Because this is going to be our guiding document for quite a while.
To the chair, I, I think making the recommend, I mean, making, getting your recommendations, you know, into the document, then I think it still needs to go back to finance committee, you know, you know, from finance committee to the full board, into the full board for vote. Because everybody's going to have to adhere to it, including us. So, and it needs to be an official approved document that we could also put on the, on our website and put part of the regs and processes that we're going to do moving forward as well. And I think every year it needs to be updated, you know, and brought back to the board for approval too. So, it's just a good practice of being able to have something.
Just want to make a motion on approval of the draft, once again, the draft budget plan document, which is a living document.
So, move.
Moved, moved in seconded, moved by Mr. Medina, seconded by Mr. Bennigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the updated school calendar for 2025, 2026. There had to be some changes due to a state mandated holiday that was added this year. So, PJ's going to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, since the last approved calendar on to 10, 2025, the governor had recognized a holiday and we became the second U.S. state to recognize this Hindu holiday called Diwali. With Diwali, the holiday happens on October 20th of this year. Now, with that being said, what we did is, since it's an extra holiday, we want to amend the calendar so that November 4th, Election Day. we want to amend the calendar so that November 4th, Election Day, now becomes a day that is going to be an early dismissal for students, along with teacher PD for the rest of the day. We've worked with B CAS and the BEA, so we had both collective bargaining units with us. One of the reasons they decided to do this was at the end of the school year, we did not want to elongate it. Secondly, the only other day we can really take off would be our February vacation. They decided against taking the February vacation day off, which would be on the 12th. With the early dismissal and the November 4th, they just, part of our conversation was what would be best for teachers. They felt that having the students come in on Election Day in the morning, and then having the rest of the day being PD would solve that extra day that we would have.
Questions for Mr. Carr. Mr. Mr. Maran, a miss.
So Election Day, usually the schools are used as voting poll stations. Isn't that going to become like a safety situation with people just coming in and out of the building? How are you gonna?
So so we've done it in past. We we've had Election Day, school, where school is open, and pending on the election, what type of election it is. We went through that, we discussed that. And part of the way they wanted to move was towards utilizing that day for the students to be able to come in in the morning again, and them to get some activity PD-wise in the afternoon.
Thank you. Mrs. Falvik, Mr. Benahan, and Miss Traver.
Yeah, my question is the same along the lines of this, even as Esterveres. Yeah, presidential election years especially are kind of overbearing to our schools, because I mean, there's lines and taking up. Yeah, that's a consideration. And I'd like to point out that I'm glad to hear that Diwali was recognized as a holiday in the state. And the holiday was recognized in the state, because, as you know, one of my passions is equitable holidays for all students. But I just want to be mindful of the calendar and the Election Day seems like may, may or may not be best, but I'll just defer to administration on that one.
This year is not presidential.
Yeah, it's not, it's not presidential this year, so that was the thought process.
So we'll be looking for another day, possibly in a presidential and gubernatorial election years, maybe?
So, you say again. Yeah, it's a lunar holiday is what it is, so it changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know why they wanted you to November for, you know, Election Day, you know, early dismissal. When that day is 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 a lot of things happening in the school, especially with our security. People, when they're running election, they think our security, they work for qualification, have to handle situations, what's going on in the Election Day, when they don't supposed to. Some security, they do it because courtesy, they know the person. But if something happened, I don't think so the people from the election or the state are going to cover our security. It's a lot of things going up and down. It's a lot of drama. It's a lot of argument. It's a lot of fight, you know. Especially to have the teachers, you know, come early and dismissal, and then the student at the same time and stuff like that. This is something that another town is no school, is not, the teacher's home, or in the, in the, the student is not coming to the school. Why are the reason Bridgeport had to have our students and our teachers there? Because for one day, teachers aren't going to get lost, because our states, our teachers here and our students are very smart. They're very professional. Just because one day could take it off, that's going to mean they're gonna, they're gonna lose a lot of things. I'm not agree that the situation had early dismissal, when the teacher can be home with the family, because another town, the school is closed.
So I can add to that, but we, we need 180 days. So instead of adding it to the end of the school year, where we we might have to add snow days and and go into the the warmer weather, they chose November 4th. We've had, we've had school open on Election Days in the past, primary election and and regular elections. And this is in conjunction with the union. So I I think for for this year, it was a surprise holiday for us, because it was voted on this legislative session. So it was voted on after our calendar was already released. And this is the, you know, the option we have this year. Next year, given it's a lunar holiday, we'll see what the day falls and and how we can work it out so that, you know, we're not, you know, in school on on days where we have a lot of visitors. But I think just given that, I don't know if that everyone wants to speak more to that, and then I'll go to Mr.
I I'd like to say one more thing. Yeah.
I guess I put your microphone on.
Actually, better. Elections are a problem on a regular day. Go to a half day, there's no lighthouse. It it this is, it it's much easier. When when there is a regular school day on Election Day, you have the regular dismissal and the in the in the conflict between the election and the regular dismissal, and then you have the lighthouse pickup and the conflict which occurs as the last rush is occurring to the pole. You know, 5:30, 6 o'clock. And when you get to a presidential, that'll be worse. So this is going to be a relatively, you know, not a, not a major election, so it'll be easier. But i- in this case, it's not going to be an issue at all. So I just think that a half day with the teachers only being the only ones in the school, I think it'll be a relatively easy day, and and it won't be a problem, and we'll be fine. Is just all I was going to say is I don't think it'll be a big problem, and we'll see what happens next year when they, when we get the new date. So this will be an easier year, and you guys, this solution is fine, is my opinion. Because the election's not, you know, the teachers would be the only ones in the building, the kids will have gone home midday, which is in dead time. The seniors vote in the morning, middle of the day, nobody's really out there voting, except a few seniors and.
Also.
Yeah.
Mr. Medina had a question?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to find out, since we're discussing it and we mentioned it, were there any other options that that came up to the discussion with the union and the teachers or teachers and the union? Was there any other options that they have mentioned? I know this one was found, I guess, favorable, like, I'm with Traver. It makes sense. It's just easier this year for that, but I just want to find out just.
Honestly, it was February 12th, and it wasn't really an option. It was something that was discussed on the table, but they wanted it to be the 4th.
Thank you.
Meaning the unions, I should say, yeah.
To the chair, guys, I understand, one of the things that especially with this calendar, we know how what what happened last year when we changed all that stuff. It's important that we get the voice of the teachers and administrative unions. And so we've done that. They sit around the table, we hashed it out, and they're like, hey, this is the best thing for us. And we thought it would be somewhat of an easy move to get it done for this year. And then this new holiday will be part of the considerations for moving forward next year as well. So again, I think.
Yeah, I I think one of the other issues was that the non-certified staff inside of their collective bargaining agreements, it says if the president or the governor or the mayor declares a holiday, they get the holiday. So even if it wasn't the teachers, they get the holiday, and there would be no support staff at the schools. That's just the reality of how it works out.
Mr. Medina.
Make a motion to approve the updated school calendar for the 2025, 26 year as presented.
Medina, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That one passes. The next item, thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval to suspend by law 9310 for the purpose of immediate implementation of the following amended recommended policies. Policy 3000, policy 3010, policy 3110, and policy 3111.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Medina, second by Mr. Benahan. All in favor to suspend the bylaw? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Traver stains. So the next item, and Ms. Casimir stains. So we have approval of the following amended recommended policies, policy 3000, the concept of roles in business and non-instruction operations.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Medina, second by Mr. Benahan. Any further debate on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Traver stains. The next item is the approval of policy 3010 for goals and objectives.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Medina, second by Ms. Esther Maran Jimenez. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Stain, Mr. Traver stains. That passes. Next item is policy 3110, the budget and planning.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Medina, second by Mr. Benahan. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Next item is policy 3111, the fiscal year policy.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Medina, second by Mr. Benahan. Any further debate? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those. Mr. Traver stains from the last policy. All right, those all pass. Next item is the first read and discussion of the following amended recommended policies. The first one is 3011.1, or is it, is that a misprint? 3011, I believe, internal controls.
I believe that's correct. I'll double check for you.
3011. Who's presenting?
That's correct. Madam Chair, it's 3011.
Yeah, I got it. 3011, thank you. So 3011. It's an individual under internal controls.
3011.
No, it's in a committee packet, but it's also on the.
They added a one.
3011.
3011.
3011. Yes.
Yeah.
I'm trying to help you.
Okay. Yeah. Who's who's presenting on it?
I had it, but I think it was only.
Get brighter.
Hey, sorry about that. Let me go down. Sorry. All right. It's a Mac. I can't feel Mac.
It's not a Mac.
Sorry about that, guys. The internal controls, this this policy just really kind of takes you through. The Board of Education accepts all board members, employees, volunteers, consultants, vendors, contractors, students, and and all other parties maintaining any relationships with the school district to act as, act with integrity, due diligence, and in accordance to the laws that do these involving school district resources. The board is entrusted, it's really internal controls of what needs to happen, you know, within the school district. This is a, this is a model policy, just with internal controls. It talks about the internal controls is a responsibility of all employees of the district. The superintendent, the chief financial officer is what was changed. It had business manager and board secretary shall be responsible for developing the internal controls designed to prevent and detect fraud, financial impropriety, whatever, and financial irregularities within the school district. So again, it just really kind of makes sure it's it 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 focuses in on the employees that should be working through the process. You'll see a lot of that in the board budget book as well. And then making sure that upon the approval of the board, the superintendent may employ any auditing firm to conduct a complete and partial audit. So it's the same things that we, so you're seeing this language, you know, being put in policy to do the checks and balances that we never did before, and never was held accountable for. So that's what that is. And so that's it. Internal controls is making sure that the board has of just a a policy addressing internal controls. So that's what that is. It's the first reading. We'll bring that back to you guys for second reading and finalize everything as well. My apologies, I didn't have that in front of me.
Mrs. Falvik? This is the first read.
Yeah, I would like to draw the board's attention to paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. In the event the concern or complaint involves the superintendent, this concern shall be brought to the attention of the board chairperson, who shall be empowered to contact the board's legal counsel, insurance agent, auditing firm, and any other agency necessary to investigate the concern or complaint. My concern with this one, as I brought up in committee, was is involving just having the chairperson informed rather than the whole entire board that there's a concern about some potential fraud or shenanigans, not reflection on, of course, obviously, the current chair or the current superintendent. But historically, when things are hidden, sometimes they're hidden in conjunction, and having more than two people know about the potential financial impropriety is better. Not having, making, it makes sense for only the board chair to be empowered to contact the auditing firm as a stopgap for frivolous lawsuits, lawsuits, frivolous investigations, and cost controls. But I think just having the chair and the superintendent as a backstop in those situations is leaves itself open to a little more potential for shenanigans in the future with another board and another superintendent.
I would recommend that you come up with recommendations of how you want the policy to change, bring it back to a policy committee for review, and then, you know, once you approve it in the committee level, bring it back to the full board for consideration. If you want to add the language, give me that language that you want to add, and then we will kind of work through that language and add it to the draft and bring it back.
If if there's a taste for it, and we could basically add the language now or skip a step, if there's a consensus around.
What if you did like the board, the executive committee, so board chair, vice chair, secretary?
Or 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 a simple comma after the board and shall notify the board, and the chairperson shall be empowered, blah, 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 to reach out to the auditing firm. This way, the whole board is informed, comma, and the chairperson is.
I I want you to be, I mean, legally, you need to be careful, because if the entire board hears a complaint, then you're going to be exempt from hearing the complaint. So you, so that's why it's done this way. If you look at either the the board chair or the vice chair, you can add a few more people to it to safeguard, to give to everybody the feel that it's going to happen. But we, even when you look at grievance policies, guys, some grievances don't come to the full board. It goes to the board chair, and you work, it comes to the board, I'm sorry, I misspoke there. You know, there's a process for grievances. It's just like you would have a process for here. One person on the board hears the concern, or you have, I can, I I'm in agreement with you about adding additional officers to it, you know, but when you do the full board, I think you're going to, I mean, that's your choice, you can do what you want to do, but I think you're going to run it. We can, we can also bring it by, bring it to legal and say, hey, would you recommend? But Kate wouldn't, Kate wouldn't recommend. But Cave wouldn't, Cave wouldn't recommend that this policy, they would have put full board in there if they felt the full board needed to hear that concern. And I, again, I understand history, I understand all of that, but just want you to be mindful of that.
Right, yeah, and um, and just, yeah, I don't want to go back and forth too much, I just want to, got to counterpoint to that. The grievances, the legal disciplinary cases, those are all under our purview. However, if there is a fraud or theft or embezzlement carried out, that's not in our purview. That's going to the police for prosecution.
You still have to give the person due process though, Joe. You know, and due process means you got to go through your system. That the district has for these types of things. Yes, it will go for legal, I mean, for um. A legal perspective as well, but I think this is why we wanted to do the first reading, so that we could have. You know, deeper conversation around, it's going to come back to Mr. Medina's uh, committee. Uh, but I think suggestions around what you want to see needs to be in, in, in written form, given to Mr. Medina. Myself, and then we'll draft something up for the board and bring it back to you, instead of sitting here trying to argue the point. I don't, I mean. We know what we need to do, and we know what, what you're wanting, uh, we'll make that happen for you.
Mr. Traver.
Yeah, I, I understand your due process concerns. Um. I'm not sure that the board is not still an appropriate body. Um, to hear this, given our most recent experience. Um, but I do understand your due process concerns. Um, um, frankly, given your own experience. Um, but I do think that um, perhaps maybe we should look at maybe the finance committee. As the body for the, you said the executive committee, I heard that, Madam Chair. Um, and so we should give some thought to that, because we want to make sure it's. It is properly aired. We wa- we want to make sure it gets properly concerned, dealt with. That's our concern. Um, but not improperly aired. I guess is how we want to make sure that it gets dealt with. So. It's easy to change and say, to the attention of the finance committee. Members of the finance committee or members of the executive committee, officers of the board. We just need to think about, do we deal with those two concerns?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Medina?
Yeah, I just want to make a motion to move uh, policy thirty eleven uh, back to committee. Um, for approval of possible um, amendment to, to the wording to possibly. Add uh, to pair ref five uh, to the attention of the executive board, and then following with. Uh, and giving the board chairperson and so on. So uh, for us to discuss it, if anybody has any uh, thing, thank you.
That motion wasn't, I'm not going to repeat it, was made by Mr. Medina and seconded by Mr. Traver. Any further debate on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, the next item on the agenda is the first read. Of thirty five forty one point two, the transportation administrative guidelines for walking distances.
The only change to this policy is to, for it to read uh, one mile up to one point five. For elementary and two miles up to two point five miles uh, for high schools. And then deleting B, where it just, it delineates uh, the definition of a one mile distance. We don't need that, just take it out.
Mr. Skolovic.
Yeah, as I mentioned at the committee level, I would want to brush this one past without a thorough read in a bigger body. Because the reason we're doing this is because, yes, transportation was safe for this year only. But there is no guaranteed funding for next year in the budget to maintain those distances as. They rescue us this year, but there's no guarantee next year. We don't, we don't even have all the facts yet. Hopefully, we'll get some more facts. On this at the upcoming meeting before any agreements reached outside of our um, domain. We'll be able to see. What we're bound to, because we may very, very well be, realistically, I think we're looking at maybe upwards of uh, twenty million dollars in. Escalated costs for the twenty five, twenty six school, twenty six, twenty seven school year, and thus far, if everything remains the same. There's no extra money in the ECS for next year, so we're at zero. And we got three million from the city this year, so that's seventeen million dollar shortfall if everything remains consistent as it did this year. So with seventeen million dollars to cut, transportation is our biggest cost, unfortunately, and it's not in the classroom. So yeah, everybody got that feel-good moment, and I don't want to take away from the fact that, yes, the kids don't have to walk this year. And I'm grateful for it, but we need significant influx of funds each and every year, because our kids. Need transportation every year, not just in election years, not just when this media press and attention. Our kids need significant funding. Increasing on a level of, at least with inflation. And. That's why it is updated, so next time we don't have to even go through a whole thing of changing the policy back and forth.
Mr. Traver.
I, I agree with Mr. Skolovic, but we live year to year. Um, next year is a gubernatorial election year, so our chances are even better. So.
Is there any motion to refer this for a second read?
Motion to, motion to accept the first read policy.
Are you still going? Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Miss Casimir stains. Alright. Alright, good night. We have a few more items. Discussion of possible revisions of the following bylaws. So we have ninety one ten, the code of conduct. For board members or decorum. In your package, you'll see um, some of the. Um, you'll see the, the proposed addition to the bylaw. Um. Again, this is just a time for discussion and, and any provisions or additions that you would like to add to this. This is taken, um, you know, Cave has developed this with other districts, and so we kind of pulled from other districts that. That are using um, these expectations, um, so that we can. Modify some of our own expectations of the board. To start with any. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Martinez.
Um, I think this is great, and I did not have any additions. My only comment to this is. Measurement. How are you going to measure this? How are you going to hold people accountable? Um. Implement this. Um, so, um, that's my biggest comment.
Yeah, and so, um, one of the things I would like to propose is um, uh, adding onto this. Um, somewhere in our bylaws or document, um, a board, uh. I don't know if we recall retreats, workshops, training, whatever it is, um, you know, uh, uh, try any, like, three, every three years. Oh, no, every three, uh, three, three or four months, not three years, we need to do it sooner. Three times a year, it's late, guys. Um, three times a year, we would have some kind of evaluation of board. So similar to what our, um. What we did on the first and second uh, uh, training with Cave, um, my, my thought process is doing a self-evaluation of, of. Us as a board, um, at the beginning of the school, whether it's being a school year or beginning of the year, we can look at the timelines and see what works for us. Um, and in, in that, when we do that, we, we kind of do it as a workshop. And if we have other trainings that we need, we can fold it in there through Cave or through other presenters. Um, and then have a, a mid-year. Uh, evaluation where we, we see if we're on, on goal for our benchmarks and, and, and our goals. And then, um, and the year evaluation as well. So if we, if we could put that in the bylaws somewhere, that can do the measurements that you're saying that we're looking for. Where we can just see if, if we're living up to um, the code of conduct as, as, as board members. Um, and, 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 yeah, I'll look at that. Mr. Traver?
Yeah, just here.
Yeah. You should have your microphone off.
I'm not sure that I have everything, because I'm not sure with the committee structure one.
We're just on the, the first one, fourth.
So, um. The, the third bullet, to focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, evaluation. Don't we have other responsibilities?
So that's like, just one. That's one part of it. So goal-setting, we, we have, that's what we haven't done, right? So that's something that we would, we would focus on doing at the beginning of the year. Um. Policy-making evaluation, that's kind of what we're doing throughout the year anyways. So this is just putting it into, yeah, we have other responsibilities.
As I went through all the bullets, I thought, okay, where'd the other responsibilities go?
And that's in, in the bylaws already. So if you look at the approved bylaws, um, the ones that we already have in place, we have our responsibilities laid out.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering, is there's, uh, okay, then you an- then you answer my, I, that's what I'm getting at, is I read through it. I'm going, okay, wait, there's the law, and what the law says we're responsible for.
And that's in the.
Bylaws listed, you know, more than these three things. Why are we only listing goal-setting with policymaking and evaluation?
It's already in the bylaws. This is just an addition to that.
Well, that's what I was wondering is.
Yeah.
Why is it in addition to what we already have? Why are we doing that? And so.
So this is like, uh, oh.
Is, wait a minute, I'm still.
Yeah.
This is the first read? Two?
We're not even, this is not a, like, uh, actual item right now, this is just. We're just discussing.
Okay, um, that's what, um, I didn't understand all this, because.
Yeah.
I was sort of like, trying to understand it, I'm like, I got other questions.
Do you want to, do you want to comment on that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we should probably remove the additional language outside of.
We should probably remove the additional language, since we're discussing it. If there's, there's a consensus around the board shall concern itself with its responsibilities rather than administrative. Or blah, 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 something like that, and it'll be all encompassing as. Our responsibilities rather than just listing singularly those and leaving some out, just leave it overly broad and not specific.
Understand what her thinking is on this. So that's all I'm trying to do, is asking why she focused on these three points here. So that's, I, I missed the discussion last Thursday, so I'm asking that question here. So I just wanted to know, that, that's what struck me as I read through these. Um, um. So. I get it, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I need to see if it sits right with me. When you get to your comments, you can explain what your point of view is, having had the discussion last Thursday. Just, I, let me get, because I want to go through a few other questions. Um. I, I had some concerns further down, and I, I can't count the bullets, but further down. Where it says respect the rights of the minority while working towards the will of the majority and recognize the importance of achieving consensus. As an important tool in community building. I do, I do understand that. Um. I, I, I sort of do. I, I'm old enough to remember the clamshell alliance, which none of you do, and how they floundered on consensus. So I, I do, I, I understand that we all would like to, hope that we all agree on every issue, but it won't happen. So I, I, I just wanted to, I just put a little ambivalence there, not a concern. I just wanted to mention that, you know. I had some hesitation on that. And then on the second page. Uh, the bullet says, take no private action that will compromise the board and the administration. It's sort of, I think. Miss Emirates's point about consequences, because I can think of some actions that were taken. Um, in particular, the one that brought the board to State Department of Ed down on our throats, on our back. That I was thinking of. What's the consequence of that? Uh. Um. And then in the meeting protocol, I'm on second. The concept of circulating proposed motions and amendments whenever possible, at least forty-eight hours before a meeting. That was like, oh. Really pie in the sky, sort of struck me. Because so much is sort of fluid as we. Yeah, that I, is that, that's your work?
No.
No, no, behind you, Mr. Medina.
Grab a mic, grab a mic, grab a mic.
I could hear.
Standing out to me in that particular language, especially now that we're, I'm kind of looking at board book, is. In doing board book, I can put in proposed motions, so I can. It just kind of struck to me. So when you guys were approving the lease, I can put in the proposed motion approval of the lease. In board book, and you guys could see that, so I don't know if that's what it's relating to.
See, I can see that, because we know that, we put it as, as an actionable item on the agenda, we get that. But when we're like, having a discussion and decide on, you know, there are, there are, there's a fluidity to a discussion. It arrives at a motion.
Um, well, I, um, that's what I'm thinking that must pertain to.
Especially to amendments, less so to motions.
That's what I was thinking, sorry for interrupting, I'm, that's what I was thinking, it, it must.
This is the fluidity.
Yeah, that it must pertain to, because again, like in board book, if I put those in, you guys should be able to. Hopefully, you should be able to see that, so when that meeting's set, you could see your proposed motions ahead of time. So hopefully, we have it in forty. Forty-eight hours, that almost makes sense if that's what it's pertaining to.
So, those are, those are my only thoughts in there.
And again, this is like, I wasn't, I just want to clarify, like, I, I wasn't sitting here and like typing all this, this is like. Danielle and I worked with um, Cave and, and pulled out from the best practices from other districts.
Yeah.
Um, and this is why we brought it to you, so we can play around with this.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
We don't really like how this works.
I understand now, I didn't understand when I read it.
Yeah.
I understand now.
Um, and I also want to clarify, um, that this is just kind of like, um. A, a con- a social contract of sorts, like, we're, we're, we're saying that this is how we're going to behave at meetings. And we know our responsibilities, because that's also outlined in our bylaws. So this was something that I think on our second meeting with Cave. They kind of showed us something like this. Um, and, you know, we're just, we're just holding ourselves accountable, and that's where, you know, we do the measurements, like the, the, the. The three times a year meetings, workshops for professional development and, and stuff like that, we can kind of see how we are holding ourselves accountable. Um, so that we could achieve the business of the district, right?
And that, I, I support you with that, I'm not, I'm not. That I, I'm not, I like that idea.
Yeah. So, yeah, some of this stuff might not work for us. Um, it might, you know, this might be from a different, but, but these are like, kind of best practices throughout the area. And, you know, I, I agree with uh, uh, Mr. Skolovic on like, maybe focusing attention on the board's business, board's responsibilities. Um, and leaving it at that, because that sort of covers everything, so, um, but yeah, Mr. Skolovic.
Yeah, as, as far as the proposed motions, if, if we do accept that, I, I understand, um, Mr. Traver's point one hundred percent, but. I, I, I've seen it on other agendas, proposed motion, I've seen it on a state board of ed, but however, he is correct, it is fluid situations. However, if we do incorporate it into the bylaw, a bylaw, a rule, and a policy is only as good as its enforcement. So if we put this as a bylaws, that it should be ready. Who is going to be responsible for constructing the suggested amendment? I mean, a suggested motion. Will it be additional duty upon the office staff? Will it be an additional duty upon the chair? So I think if that thing does stick. That it needs to be, the responsibility for that needs to be delineated to a specific individual.
I think we can, um, look at that when we go back to committee on this, because, um, if board book has that option where they kind of. Make the proposed motions for us, that, that, that'll take a lot of work off of the staff, but, um, but we can see. Um. You know, if, if it, if it's not, and if we have to put that on somebody, we, we can kind of discuss on if we want to do that or. you know, if, if it, if it's not, and if we have to put that on somebody, we, we can kind of discuss on if we wanna do that or not. Cause that, and you know, on a day like today, that's eleven, over eleven different motions, more than that, because you have other sub-items, right? So, um, so that, that, that is time-consuming, so that's a good point, too. Um, um, if it's an automatic thing that Board Book can do, I'm for it, but if it's something that, where we, where the, the proposed motions.
So I put it in this.
You typed it in, you had to type it in. But if Board Book could do it automatic, that'd be different.
The Board Book, I, I have to put the agenda item in, so you, your agenda item is referral or approval of the four twenty-eight that could suit lease, right? I can just copy that and put that as my proposed motion and take, and just, it, cause it's the approval, that's your agenda item, and I could just copy it right over, so it's not an extra typing, it just copy paste.
And again, they're proposed motions, so it's not like we're, we're stuck to them, right? We can, we would, we would discuss them, and, you know, especially like, some of our access sessions, those are, those change a lot, so. Um, so, so, yeah, um. Yeah, see what you want for like, language on that, and bring it to committee, like, when we go back to committee on that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if it pleases the board, um, I, I would entertain a motion to send this back to committee, that where we can all dissect this document a little bit more, I know it's a intense document, um, and we can go through that.
I second that.
Wanna make a motion to bring this back to committee? Please, um, if you made a recommendation today, please get that to, uh, Mr. Medina, and CC Danielle on that, so we can, and myself, so we can add, incorporate those recommendations into, this document, so that at committee, we already have the redlined items. The motion's been made and seconded, any further debate? Um, and if you didn't make a, if you did not make a recommendation, just for the, that information too, if you, if you look through it, and that way we can add it to the, um, language. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, um, the next item is, uh, meeting conduct of public address. And so, um, well, we discussed in committee on this item. Um, some board members would like to, um, amend, you wanna speak into it?
Please, thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it. Um, so yes, this brought, was brought up by, um, by the committee itself also, especially through Ms., uh, with, hearing the public, uh, in the community forums that we held and everything, and discussing about, uh, public comment to adding it, uh, instead of two minutes, to changing it to three minutes, um, making it full board, uh, public comment forty-five minutes, I know that we, we discussed, uh, changing it. Not only that, but also saying what came up to the committee and discussion was to changing it to three minutes, but also just at, keeping it at thirty minutes was suggested, making the number of, uh, public comment down to ten. And I'm bringing it, I brought it to the full board, uh, through the committee, to have it for three minutes, the total of forty-five minutes for the fifteen total, keeping that, understanding that not very often do we have fifteen. Uh, and then I know that we can always add, through vote of the board, uh, to extend public comment, if there is a room of, you know, forty, fifty people that would like to speak through the board. So I don't think it's gonna be any, it's just fifteen minutes, if we have the fifteen people on that any particular day. So I don't think it's too harmful, and, um, I think, uh, our parents and our community deserve it, and that's, uh, why we brought it forward to the full board for discussion and for a possible approval.
I wanted to say that I, I do, I, I like the idea of the three minutes. Um, but my recommendation was to keep it at ten speakers, to keep the timeline, um, that we have already, so that, um, we can get through the business of the district as well. And our current bylaw says that if there are more than fifteen public speakers, then after number fifteen, at the end of the meeting, there's still time on the agenda for them to speak. So they, they wouldn't be cut off, they would still be able to speak later on, and that's what our current bylaw says, so if we cut it to ten with three minutes each, um, it still gives us the same amount of time in, in that front head, end of the meeting. This is after, we already have student representatives speaking, um, for three, I can't count how many high schools at this point, BMA, the Three for a Child, Central Harding Basque, um, they're all speaking. And then you also have, um, our reports, referrals, I mean, I don't think we went to new business today till eight fifteen. So, that extra time where we have that fifteen minutes is crucial, because we also, not to mention we're paying a court reporter to be here, we're paying security to be here, we're paying IT to be here, that's all overtime. Um, so if, if we're, if we're thinking about that when we're holding, when we're, when we're holding inside of school and stuff, we're, 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 we have to pay overtime for a lot of staff. I'm not saying that we should completely limit their conversation to just two minutes, I'm saying we can still do three minutes with ten, ten speakers at, at the front, and if it's a big night where we have, if, if it was tonight, if, if that money didn't come through for transportation, I was expecting a big, a full house here tonight, right? So something like that, of course, we're gonna hear from the public, um, and, and allow that to happen, but we, we could also move that according to our bylaws to the end of the meeting as well. Um, and I did like what Joe said last in committee, how, you know, you know, city council will have public hearings when big items are coming up, and that's something, if we can incorporate that into our bylaws, where we know, we, we know the budget's coming up, and we're gonna have cuts. Have a, a forum where, do we just have, um, folks speak on, to the budget, right? And we're just listening to, about that, where, um, so that way we're not cutting off time, or, or anything like that, we, we can allow everybody who wants to speak to speak. Um, but at a regular board meeting, I, my suggestion would be to give it three minutes, but give, give it, cut it down to ten people to keep it within the same thirty-minute timeline. Um, I saw hands, so, Mr. Sikolovik, Mr. Traver, Mr. Benahan.
Yeah, I like the idea of three minutes, um.
Three, three minutes or thirty?
Thirty minutes. And I think the only thing we should do, be changing in this policy to effectuate that, is change A one and B one, the first word from two to three, and leave the rest as is. Maximum forty, that takes care of everything right there. Our public, they, they don't really come out, and when they do come out in mass, this board, in the last, I don't think I've ever seen it in my entire tenure, where there was a motion made to expand public speaking, that it was denied, that it failed. We give our, we give our public an opportunity to speak each and every time. Not even everybody takes it two minutes, some people take a minute, a minute and a half, it, it, it'll all balance out, and that'd give the pu- public more of a voice. Um, cause some, some thoughts on complex issues, you can't get out in two minutes. So, I, so I definitely would support, and actually, I would like the, um, make the motion to revise word one in public address A to three, and word one in section B to read three.
Second.
B one and, and A one, three, okay. Motion was made to revise, uh, section A one and B one to say three. Um, and second by Mr. Medina. Any further debate on that one? Ms. Estremer Jimenez?
This is going for the first read, right?
This'll go back to, um, it would go back to committee.
Okay, thank you.
It's not on the agenda for first read.
But it's on the agenda for revision, and that's what we're doing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, so we can, we can, um, go for first read, yeah. Any further debate on that motion? On that motion? To revise it to three minutes? So the motion, I'll tell you what the motion is, the motion is to revise it. So there is a motion made, we have to vote on that motion. The motion is to, um, to, uh, revise li- uh, section A one to say three. And section B one. We're, we're on public hearing, we're on meeting conduct, ninety-one sixty, we've been on ninety-one sixty. So, um, to me say three, so that's the motion, any further debate on that specific motion? Cause we'll take a, we'll take a vote on that motion. On that motion, okay. No. The motion is to just change the word two to three. So it would read, three minutes will be allotted to each speaker for an unlimited nu- number of speakers. Once fifteen speakers have provided testimony, public speaking will be suspended for the purpose of addressing the rest of the agenda. Can you put your bike on for a jump?
I concur with the chair, that thirty minutes is should be the limit on the public speaking. We have never, and go back to what you said, we have never failed to allow everybody to speak when there was a full house. And so, if we still wanna try and maintain the thirty-minute cap, we have always extended the speaking time, when there was a full house that wanted to speak. And so, I think her proposal saying three minutes in the thirty-minute period maintains some limit on the speaking. Uh, and you're talking to the person who spent ten years or more till eleven or twelve o'clock at night here, in this room. When we had three minutes and, and forty-five, so I'm not, I'm really not opposed to what you've proposed. I just think that what the chair addressed was trying to have some handle on it, some ability to control it, when there was a need to control it, um, by limiting it to thirty minutes, public speaking at the beginning of a meeting. For some reason, somebody at some point did that. And so, three, if you want to extend the speaking time by allowing three minutes, then you're going to limit it to ten speakers in the bylaws, by saying, let it be two minutes, uh, three minutes in a thirty-minute period. But we still have the power as a board, as we have always done, to my knowledge, in my experience, to say, you know, a motion, a move to allow all people to speak who've signed up to speak, and not make them wait till the end of a meeting. I do remember in the nineties, when we all, everybody spoke at the end of the meeting. That was when we actually got to change the board to change it, and let it speak at the beginning of meetings. Um, so, I do think that it's reasonable to say we're going to dedicate thirty minutes to public speaking at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and if we want to change it to allow more people to speak, the board has to take a, a vote to extend that speaking time.
Any other question, uh, for this item, this motion, Mr. Medina?
Yes, I know everybody keeps on referring to it, I'm just wondering where did anybody, um, read, anything here that there was a limit of thirty minutes? And it was referred to a few times, and, and, and multiple times today also.
Two minutes for fifteen speakers is thirty, is thirty minutes.
Well, it says, and I'll read it, two minutes will be allotted to each speaker for an unlimited number of speakers, period. Once fifteen speakers have provided testimony, public speaking will be suspended for the purpose of addressing the rest of the agenda. Once the agenda has been completed, public speaking will resume for all remaining speakers before the meeting is adjourned. So, again, under that.
The thirty minutes, the thirty minutes is right there, you said, you just said it, two minutes for fifteen speakers. Then the re- additional, so speaker number sixteen will go at the end of the meeting. So for that time at the beginning of the meeting, that's thirty minutes, and then after that, at the end of the meeting, everybody still gets a chance to go in our bylaws. But at the beginning of the meeting, it's just fifteen min- fifteen speakers at two minutes each, that equals thirty minutes. So it doesn't specifically say thirty minutes, but it says two minutes for fifteen speakers, so that's thirty minutes.
Right, it doesn't say two minutes for fifteen speakers, it says after the fifteen speakers, then we will continue with the agenda, and then public speaking will continue after. So it doesn't say anything about thirty, and you can't add, you know, because you're saying two minutes, it says it here, then it's a, there's a period, then it says one fifteen, then you're saying, okay, two times fifteen people, thirty, then it's concluded, because again, I just wanna make sure it's.
Public speaking is not concluded after that, public speaking still happens at the end of the meeting. So if there's eighteen members, if there's eighteen people in the public who wants to speak at the beginning of the meeting, after, um, the student representatives, there is a time allotted for fifteen speakers at two each. If there are eighteen speakers, the last three speakers get to go at the end of the meeting, if, if we don't suspend the bylaws. You know, if we suspend the bylaws and say, we'll all speak at once, and, and that's, then that's thirty-nine minutes of speaking.
I, I believe Mr. Medina is correct, and you're correct. I believe that the old language said unlimited speakers, and when they modified it to limit it, they failed to take out unlimited. Um, some sloppy work there, that was done in the past, I do believe you're correct, cause it used to be unlimited. Um, and they, they decided to limit that, and push the, the spillover into the end of the meeting. Somebody should have taken that word unlimited out, and it didn't get taken out.
No, because it is unlimited speakers, so twenty-five people can come in here and say, we wanna speak.
I'm, I'm not, I really, we, we, I think Mr. Medina's point is correct, that word should have been removed when you decided to limit it to fifteen at the beginning of the meeting, but I, it doesn't matter, it just, it, it's, it's a bit of a sloppy writing. But it, you're correct about how it's been done, and that's how it's been done, it's fifteen now, for a half hour. And that is correct, and I'm, I'm supporting the way it's been done. Um, it's been a half hour now, and that's the way it's been done, consistent with the others, so it's just, I'm, the question is whether we do three, forty-five minutes or a half hour at the beginning of the meeting. And I'm opposed to Mr. Sikolovik's extension of forty-five minutes now.
Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just to listen to all of you, and I'm gonna say this very clear, and for the record, um, when, when, um, people, parents come, or whoever come to speak to us, okay, we give it two minutes to three minutes, I'm very glad we give it three minutes, because sometimes two minutes is not enough, because I have the experience, standing there for two minutes, sometimes it's not enough. Um, I don't know what is the issue, if they say we have more than fifteen people to, to speak. And I know sometimes we can, I'm afraid, you know, um, suspend the law, because I know we did it before. The only thing I can say, we need, we need to listen to parents, we have to listen to them. We are elected officials because they vote for us. I don't, I'm not agree like that to Currell, you cannot speak, you're not gonna, that's the issue, have it before, and that's the reason parents come to our meetings upset, because they don't, they don't listen to them. Board members, they don't listen to them, board members, they don't speak to them, other people, they don't listen to them, that's why they come here, they come angry. Because I know parents call board members, and sometimes I don't have time for you to speak, or they text send back, you know, with attitude, or anything. So, when bo- parents come here, we have to listen to them. You know, that's the reason we are, where I, the way I see it, that, I see as a board member, I work for them. You know, because they elect me, they were, you know, they vote for me, so I'm very glad that we have to listen to them. If we are more than fifteen or something like that, I know we can suspend the law, and we listen to them. If we listen to them, then when they come, trust me, the number's gonna go down. Because they, that's what we wanna hear, they don't wanna get annoyed, and I don't like to annoy my parents. That's what I'm here for, for work for them and listen to them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further dispute on the motion to change, um, A one to three minutes and B one to three minutes? I will just say, if you change B one, it says a maximum of thirty minutes there, so you would have to change the language of that whole.
I'm okay with leaving it. I'm okay with leaving it like that, because that B one is a special meeting, and special meetings are never really had public comment before, we brought it up in our last revisions, and that's an additional thing, and it's to agenda items only, so, I'm okay with leaving that right there, unless somebody else wants to change it and make.
My only thing is, would, would you would have to change, since it says maximum of thirty minutes, you have to change maximum of fifteen speakers to maximum of ten speakers.
You are correct. Like to make a motion to amend the amendment in section B, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment in section B. The word. What's the word? I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it. Would like to make a motion to amend my amendment to include row, section B, subsection one to read instead of for a maximum. To leave it as a maximum, oh, okay, I see, I see where I got it. Okay, I'm sorry. In quotations or brackets, maximum of fifteen speakers to a maximum of ten speakers.
So I'm going to reiterate. A1 is, the amendment is. Oh yeah, second that. All right. So the amendment to the amendment is to change, uh, two minutes will be allotted to each speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes, maximum of ten speakers. So is there any further debate on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Three people have that one. So that amendment's there. Now, the actual motion is the amendment of, or the revision of the bylaw to say three minutes on A1 and three minutes on B1. Any further debate? All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I oppose. Any abstentions? Saying, Mr. Traver's saying, so the new language will read in the first read that goes back to committee will say, three minutes will be allotted to each speaker for an unlimited number of speakers. And three minutes will be allotted to each speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes, maximum of ten speakers. That's going to go back to our first read.
That considered revision we're doing or what we're, what we were doing there? Because I want to make sure we were talking about that earlier, that this was a revision. So it doesn't need to go to a.
It could be, but it's probably safe for just to do the first read and second read or do a revision. Or much like we did today, wave the first read and just bring it back before the board for a second read. That makes sense.
Got it. So that one is three minutes and then the other one is the three minutes with the ten minimum and B, right? They're extended to there. Thank you.
Any further comments on public comment? All right. The next item on the, on the, um, the last item on the agenda is the, uh, committee structure. This is just again, um, more of a conversation with you guys so that we can develop a committee structure similar to like what we saw in the model. There's nothing in your, we don't have anything yet because legal, legal is working on something for us. We, we do have, yeah. So for this item, we do have council looking at our current committees and, and defining them for us. So defining standing committee versus, um, you know, special meetings and, and whatnot. And, um, so, but with the board, we would like to, you know, bring something to council to kind of help us along. And so this item's on the agenda just to talk about the current committee structure, what you want to see. You know, and just in general, I was looking through other large cities in Connecticut and something that Ms. Esther Mary Jimenez brought up earlier was that committee calendar. And I believe was, uh, New Haven laid out the, the dates for finance committee throughout the whole year, right? The dates for their, um, teaching and learning committee throughout the whole year. Instead of us, it's maybe the third Wednesday and then maybe that doesn't happen because there's a, a spring break that week, right? So if you lay it out for the year, you're looking at the calendar ahead of time and you know if there's any conflicts already. That way we know for sure that committee's still going to run. Um, so I like that idea that Ms. Esther Mary Jimenez brought up. And I saw that on another website. And so, yeah, this is just a conversation about how we want our committees to look and then we'll draft something up and bring it before the board. So. Oh, another thing was defining what the committees do. So like on the website, you'll see like, you know, my idea is like, you know, you know, finance committee is going to look over the X, Y, and Z, right? So that people know when they're looking up the items. So if we define it in our bylaws, that would be helpful as well. Mr. Traver?
Would this include how we decide committees?
Yeah, like votes on, like taking a vote to, um, expand committees, disband committees, whatever.
Yeah, ad hoc, permanent. That's, you know, as we discussed in the training. Um, you know, we had this conflict apparently, um, that dates back prior to most of us being on the board. About the formation of committees. I'm, I'm going to try and do this as neutrally as I can. The debate was that there had been the elimination of one committee unilaterally. That led to the elimination of multiple committees unilaterally. And so the process of how we decide, and then when you became chair, the elimination of, the addition of a committee unilaterally. So process for which how we determine committees as a board, we need to lay that out clearly in our bylaws. So I think that we all understand how that should be done. Because it was apparently not clear as to how that should be done. I think that's as neutrally as I can say it. So that we all know and understand the process in which that gets decided and voted on by the board. So that nobody is confused. And then I agree with you, we should decide what we agree now should be the permanent committees. What are the most logical ones and how they get scheduled and all the stuff that you just mentioned?
And, and one of the things that, um, you know, we, we went back and forth with the key on this and one of our trainees is like, what's a good number of committees? Because we know that nine was a lot for this district, right?
That was the first unilateral move was nine was too much.
Whatever it was. So, you know, I know, um, Nick had mentioned three, I think Jody had mentioned four. So, you know, that's something we can, we could discuss and, and really define. Okay. So when we meet with finance, we're really going to talk about these contracts, this, this binder, like making sure that our, our budget's moving over, that oversight stuff. When we meet with, uh, teaching and learning, we're going to talk about X, Y, and Z and.
Well, and I think some of that came up in the summer conference. That's why, you know, I want to, you know, I think the, the book that we were just talking about, the sort of how they're organized and how they, how they operate as a board and the committees came up. So we need to, you know, sort of bring that in too. But yes, what, what we think, what we think is a good number, but also what we're trying to accomplish, what we want to deal with. And then as we talk about what our goals are, you know, what we want to deal with. Well, is something really permanent or is that more of an ad hoc mission? Is that something that we want to deal with temporarily and we want to make that an ad hoc committee that will function this year? But we don't want to see that as a permanent committee.
And I would say some other larger districts, they have, um, let me say they have four or five committees, but there's certain committees that meet every month, right? And other committees that don't necessarily mean to meet monthly, right? They're going to meet quarterly or every other month. So if you look at other districts, you know, if you do have, um, you know, if, if, if there's no business to discuss, um, you know, for months at a time, then that might be a good quarterly meeting committee if we're going to keep it a standing committee. Or just move it to ad hoc. So that's kind of what this discussion is about. So, um, I, I, I don't, I, I think there is a sense of urgent, there is a sense of urgency, I have to say, for this to be done. Um, this is a state department. I don't know, we need to really outline our committees. But we also want to make sure we're doing it that works best for us, like the district, um, not really us for, for the district. Um, and, and put it in place. Um, I, I will say this needs to be done soon. Um, so like yesterday, so that there is a sense of urgency. And so, you know, I, I, I know we don't have anything in front of you today, but that's why we, we have to have some agenda so we can really discuss this.
It seems to me we want to have it done, um, in the next three months.
In the months?
By December.
Oh, no, like this month, like September, like September, it needs to be done.
Well, I'm just saying, you understand what I'm saying. It needs to be done.
You want it done before new board members come on?
Before, well, by the next administration, right? Well, when we would normally change committees, change.
This was something that was on our agenda back in June. It should have been kind of worked on then.
I'm not, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying.
We need to get it done.
The end date is that when committees, when we want to have the rules in place so that when somebody might be changing committees and committee assignments, the rules are in place for that.
Definitely. Um, Mrs. Kolevik?
Yeah, uh, the sense of urgency definitely is surrounding the committees and the definitions, not so much of adding and subtracting committees. That could be the three month timeline. But as far as defining the committees and their goals, that's something the state has insisted on seeing. So, um, we got to start having a discussion about what the board does and scratch some stuff out. It's been in my mind for a while. So I was just like, to get us started, I would suggest that the finance committee concern itself with budgetary issues and any other contracts that won't be covered by another committee. That'll become clear in a minute. Instruction and support services will concern itself with curriculum, textbooks, education related, um, issues, field trips and student issues and any other contracts related to those. Policy and personnel will consider, concern, will, um, deal with policy, hiring recommendations and personnel contracts. Facilities will deal with building related issues, contracts and security. Security has been traditionally under facilities in the past. And we need someone to be able to discuss facilities and, and that's just to kick us off to get started. So we have a little jumping off point. This, this has been traditionally what they've done before, before the contracts became a committee in and of itself. The contracts were to this people who specialized in each area. So because my finance is looking at, um, a teaching and learning day and you got a teacher on teaching and learning and a teacher on finance. We're looking at contract. We don't know if it's best for people choosing between two contracts to push forward or what have you. So that would be best handled in teaching and learning. Same thing with building, same thing with, and the finance being a catchall for all the rest is somewhere else. Everything else needs to go. And that's just to get us started.
Anybody else want to add to that? Oh, that's what it was. Um, can you repeat policy for me? What you said for policy?
Policy, policy and. Policy and personnel concerns itself with policy, hiring recommendations and employee related, um, contracts.
This is a, this is a suggestion, um, that policy becomes a committee of its own because of, um, the, what we need to do right now in terms of the fiscal, the fiscal policies that we need to change. But also the, over the next two years, we'll be up, will we going through all our series? And I think there needs to be a lot of focus in that committee on policy. And I think personnel, this is just a suggestion, guys, personnel might need to be its own committee as needed. So it wouldn't be a, a monthly committee because we're not doing, we're not hiring executive directors every month. Right? So we wouldn't need that necessarily every month. So my suggestion would be that personnel becomes, um, I wouldn't say either ad hoc committee or just a quarterly committee or as, an as needed committee. We could kind of define that, um, tonight, I guess. But separate that from policy. One of the policies that we're going to be working on and is an urgent policy is our hiring practices. So like that's, that's something that's going to go before, um, committee soon. Because of all the issues we have in the past, um, even this past summer with, with that, with that item. So if we could put personnel as its own committee and not, not, not a monthly committee. That's a committee that meets quarterly or as needed, depending on the, who need to hire in an executive cabinet. Or principals, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree 100%. It should be, um, decoupled from it. And I suggest then as, uh, make, make it a committee, make it a committee as a whole because then we get around the portion where we could all make the recommendation to the superintendent. What we have, what have, on who to hire and what have you. And we could all be in executive session. As you know, we all can't be in executive session now at this point in time due to state statute. So, yeah, as far as putting a quarterly and putting a date on it, I guess we just listed, uh, put it on the website as needed basically, rather than try to set a timeline.
Yeah. Um, did you say there's a state statute about executive session?
Yeah, there's a, there's a state statute that this allows noncommittee members from entering an executive session. It was brought back a couple of, a couple of years ago. That's why you only see three or four of us when we had the meeting and other people had to stay sitting out. And, uh, but that'll be a great way, not, not around it, but to include all board members in the decisions that affect the board and affect the city. Because we were all elected to make these decisions. And it's not, it's not to get around for you, it's to work within the confines and restrictions of for you for the betterment of inclusive.
Anyone else? So what I have here from the suggestions that were brought up is to, and this is something we'll send out to our council to kind of run through the, the bylaws for us is we have, um, four committees, facilities, finance, instruction, support services and policy. And then one committee of the whole personnel that would be as needed. But those four committees would be, um, defined monthly, monthly meetings. And, um, can we add in that language about creating a calendar for, with specific dates?
Oh, I was waiting. We voted, um, two summers ago to create an ad hoc committee on staffing. Um, which never happened. It was in the summer of transition from this parent, superintendent parent to superintendent Levy David. And it was based on something New Haven had done. It was, uh, uh, the ad hoc committee was designed to be, uh, members of the BEA, the, the BCASTs and administrators to what New Haven had done was, it, it, it said, look, if we had all the money we needed, what, how many, what, what, what would we be doing staff wise? What would be the ideal staffing to do what we wanted to do? And New Haven went through that. And so you know how the police department says we're 300 cops short all the time? You know, we're short staffed? Well, we need to be able to do that. We need to be able to say, the, the concept was, we need to be able to say that if we had the resources that we need to do. And New Haven can do that. New Haven can tell you.
What is? Sorry, I'm asking Dr. because I, I thought we've had a conversation. And so what Mr. Traver's saying is that.
New Haven, New Haven can tell you how many people they need, how many people they're understaffed. Um, and they did that study three years ago, I believe. And so I had spoken to the board member who was involved with it. And we passed a resolution to set up a committee to do that here in Bridgeport. Um, and we passed a resolution to set up such a committee here in Bridgeport to create an ideal staffing model for the Bridgeport Public Schools. If we had all the resources we needed, all the money we needed. How many administrators do we have downtown? How many administrators will we have for the buildings? How many teachers will we have? How many, you know, it's the ideal staffing levels. How many paras would we have? How many secretaries would we have? How many cafeteria workers would we have? How many custodians would you have? How many staff people would George have? You know, you know, all that stuff. Um, and, and so that was what New Haven did so that they could say this is how many people were understaffed in this area. And it just gave you the ability to do, it gave us the ability to say, this is what we really need. If we had the resources that we.
And I know we don't have that. We have none of those staffing models that, and most districts have those. You know, if you had a 500 members campus, you should be able to get this, this, this and that. You know, we don't have any of those things. You know, we don't have any of those things in practice right now.
No, no, I know that. I'm just saying, we did pass that resolution two years ago and then it floundered in the transition from.
Technically, you don't need a resolution for that. That's what you pay.
We had a committee that was going to.
The HR department is one who does that. They make the recommendation and then we bring that back to the board for consideration. But we're, we're so shorthanded in HR, you can't even begin to have.
Well, that would certainly be one place that you would.
It's a very intense process to, to be able to come up with those. Now, we can, we can take, there's models out there that we can grab and use, but
I don't, I don't see that. I, I don't see it. As, as a former president of one of the bargaining units, I don't see that as strictly in HR. Because the teachers and the social workers, the, these different people have different.
But, but that's what the superintendent does though. His, his, that's what his cabinet does is to, to look at those areas of.
I, I understand that you professionally have that point of view. I do. I respect that. And I, I would respect your point of view on that and your opinion on that. But you also understand what I'm saying that, that professionals might disagree with your opinion on that. Um, a professional, a professional social workers association might disagree on what proper social work staffing is. A professional psychologist association might disagree on what the proper staffing level is for psychologists. Uh, you know, I, I, I'm just saying that that was the point was to, to have a crew of people sit down, a committee of people and hash it out what the, the ideal staffing level would be. And that is what they did in New Haven. It was done by a, a committee of people.
And I'm, and I'm, as I, I'm curious just to, to kind of, cause I wasn't, I don't have the historical piece on that. And that's probably one of the reasons why it, it went to the wayside is because it's very intense to be able to kind of bring all of those together. I respectfully understand.
To the wayside here because lots of people wanted to participate and then we hired a new superintendent. And she didn't want to do it.
Oh, this recently?
No. In 2023.
Oh, 23. Uh. Uh, well.
So that, that is what happened. So I'm only raising it as a possible subcommittee, ad hoc committee for us to, to, uh,
So I think for the purpose of this, we need to define what standing committees are. And then ad hoc, what an ad hoc, what an ad hoc committee is. And then once we define the ad hoc committee, then we can go back and say, let's start a committee on the, the staffing. And starts going that. But right now, just be specific on like, we want to start our ad hoc committee on X, Y, and Z. We don't even know what an ad hoc committee is because it's not defined in our bylaws.
I, I don't disagree with you. You were already discussing specific ad hoc committees. That's why I raised.
No, those are, those are the, those are standing, those will be standing committees. These will be standing committees.
You were discussing a personnel.
As a standing committee.
Yes, as an ad hoc.
No, I, I said as a standing committee, but quarterly or something. It wouldn't be a monthly meeting.
I misunderstood you then.
Mr. Sikolovik?
Yeah, um, I think we should accept as a possible first read at the, at the very least tonight. So we got some forward progress. The decoupling of personnel from policy.
Yeah.
To make it a standing committee that meets as needed.
Mm hmm.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole. Any further great on that motion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Is there any other motions that anyone wants to make on, on these items?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion for, well, I can't compel the board to do anything to add to my suggestions by email and bring it back to the next meeting. So we could have fully defined committees to push forward.
Yeah. So you want to make a motion on that or just ask the board to do that?
Yeah.
So if you, if you guys, everybody who just added something tonight, send an email to me. Can, can you send an email to me? Um, and I'll, I'll work with, um, our council to kind of define everything and, and make it into our bylaw. And it'll come before the, the board again, uh, as a, as a first read item. Mr. Kastner? What we decided today? But so we, as of right now, there, there's the finance committee, instruction, support service committee, policy, facilities, and those will be monthly committees, those standing committees. And then the personnel committee will also be a standing committee, but that would be meeting as needed.
As a committee of that.
As a committee of the whole. Sorry. That's important, please. Um, also added, um, in that we would, um, put into the bylaws that we would create a calendar with specific dates for each committee. Um, to be posted to the website. Um, and that could, we, we need to do additional language that can be approved by December when we, when we, or January 1st or whatever, when we create the committees, we can create you the dates. I don't know. When, when would that be? By the first board meeting of the, of the new year? I don't know. So that would have to be, because our committees change in December and early January. That would have to be said there, like the calendar would have to be approved then. Would that make sense? We should have a date on when we should approve the calendar. That way we're not creating these committees and say, oh yeah, they're going to be on the calendar and then come March, we still don't have the calendar. That's what I'm trying to say. Yeah. So I'll put with it, with the, with a date. We could decide the date later. We'll work on the dates. Yeah. Yeah. Any, was there anything else that I missed? So we'll put that language in. Mr. Shemir?
I have, um, something for Dr. Avery, not related to the policies.
Okay. So we're gonna, um, any, so we'll, we'll move on from that. And then so we'll add on to what you have to say. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I had two items, Dr. Avery. Um, the first one is about the silent panic alarms. So I wanted to know, we chatted about this in the spring, sometime in the spring. And wanted to know what the, what the plan was for potential implementation into the schools.
Yes, we, we talked to this prior to the end of school year. We talked about and we demoed it and gave you guys a, a preview of what that actually is and what it does for the campuses. Uh, I am going to suggest to the board that we have a, um, an executive meeting with, uh, Assistant Chief, uh, Grek. Uh, it is a, a potential district protocol for safety. And we don't want it out in the public in a way to where we, we kind of compromise what we're doing. Uh, but it, I think it's a, a, a strong possibility to be able to implement that pretty quick. Uh, you know, at a, I think we can, we could run as, as starting as early as probably September, October. Uh, you know, have a couple of pilot schools that we can start it with. There is some protocol involved because the panic button can go directly to the police and fire and all that. We may not want to, you know, we may, we not want to implement the full fledged, but do some practice things within the demo. Uh, or pilots to where there's an incident happens in a building, they can punch the building for a fight or a leak or something like that to where we can get staff to get used to it. Uh, there is also about $2 million available through the state for grant purposes to purchase and to, uh, solidify that. Uh, the grant funding, uh, is not, um, we're still right now waiting for, um, the funds to become available. It was passed in the legislative session. The grants department is watching and getting ready to make sure that we, 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 we can apply their competitive grants. Uh, but I think we should be able to get some dollars to support the implementation of it. Um, a- again, the request for, um, the monies is not out there yet. But again, I, I just think Assistant, you know, Chief Grek would, could kind of give the board the pros and cons of, you know, what this system could do for the district, uh, in making sure that we we, we understand the magnitude of it. Cause it's now the state of, the state of Connecticut and the governor is promoting it as well for schools in Connecticut. That's why there, there's two, 2.6 million dollars available.
Yeah, just a point on, on the agenda, but like.
This is.
Discussion about this.
Yeah. So this isn't a, yeah. So this is just a recommendation. This is a, you want a recommendation for this one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any other, any other recommendations for anything? Because we're going to end the meeting soon, but.
I have one last recommendation for Dr. Avery, um, which would be the potential looking at for the grants department to potentially do fundraising. Um, I know that's a tall order to ask, but I got the idea from one of the community, um, forums where someone said, let's go to Greenwich and get that 1% money. So that's kind of where my thought process was going. Not sure if the grants department is the best place, but kind of wanted to look at additional monies coming into the district.
Yeah, we could refer that to a finance committee. Um, I, I, Mr. Medina, did you say something?
Make a motion. I did have my hand.
Okay. Uh, there's another point of, or something point of privilege, but do you want to make a motion adjourned? All right. Somebody had a point of privilege. So Mr. Benahan. There's any further, Mr. Benahan, do you have something? Yeah.
All right. Thank you, manager. I'm going to brief, I'm going to be very fast because what I'm going to say is because a lot of people, they think that the board vacation or the cabinet of the staff, we was not doing nothing in the summer. And the reason I'm saying this is because one of the big things is because I know we do a lot of thing in the summer. And I can say that, uh, the committee department, you know, we did a four. Um, I know, um, sorry, uh, Mr. Trevor said about the, the cave, when we, when we went to Westbrook, you know, it was amazing. The stack force, especially education, the Dominican parade, um, walking through the basic. Bridgeport Elevate, Elevate, when we go to gala, they recognize a lot of students from Bridgeport School. Um, Puerto Rican parade, when we, they see us was very happy to see the board for the third year. You know, and, you know, and parents and students were very happy to that. Um, the new center, you know, we're cutting the, the, the other day, the, the, um, the ribbon. Everybody was enjoying, everybody liked it. The, one of the last one was the Don, Donbar School and I love, you know, um, Saturday, parents came, uh, the staff came, you know? And why I'm saying this because people, they think we're not doing nothing. Your staff that they resided in Sunday, like they was working. I came because the day we put the racing the flag of equality, you had two staff getting out of that building because they were trying to do everything done for the week. And I respect that because when they're supposed to be home and relaxing, they was working, you know, and I, I like to acknowledge that. Um, and one of the big things, Donbar School, um, the former chair and vice chair, Mr. Hernan, he worked with a company called Breedor with, uh, human resource. They donate almost 350, uh, book bags for the students only for Donbar. And the last thing I'm going to say this, one of the last thing that I, thank you for the staff. Because they do an amazing job now in the summer and they don't never give up. And I really appreciate that. People that don't see that. People like to talk, you know, think they're not supposed to talk, but they don't come to you and ask you that theory, what they doing or what, or they ask one of the board members, what the staff are doing. But we go, because they come and talk to you and they ask you, they will see what they're doing. And I'm, I've witnessed that. And one of the last thing is, and I'm supposed to say this in the beginning, but everything was so fast. I like to have a, before we meet, um, leave in a minute of silence because I know we had two staff pass away. One of there was Mete Vehilio Velis. He was a crossing guard of Bridgeport Public School. And the second one was Isaiah Avizan. He was the security of Curry at school. Two amazing, phenomenal people, two gentlemen. They work very good with Bridgeport Public School. Support the parents, love so much the, the students. And I'd like to have a get, um, um, minute of silence for them, please.
We'll have a moment of silence.
Thank you, manager. And thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I just want to remind the board that tomorrow we have, um, the ribbon cutting for Bassett High School at 1:00 PM. Um, I think five of us went today and Ms. Kastner, Mr. Traver, Mr. Medina, myself and Mr. Woodson were there. Um, and it's a, and I know other board members have gone to see the school and it's, it's really, um, an amazing, uh, thing that it's, it's amazing, the school. So, um, so I think, you know, there, I know there's a lot of issues though with the traffic concerns and, you know, the environmental concerns there, but with giving the students this, this opportunity, um, you know, we had to thank the board members of the past who, who voted on that, um, um, because I think it's an amazing opportunity for them. So please come tomorrow if you have a chance at 1:00 PM for the ribbon cutting. And then our convocation will be on, um, Wednesday morning at the amphitheater. And then the lastly, if you, if you can visit schools on the first day of school, please reach out to Olivia. She's reached, she's been reaching out to some of the board members. Um, if you're able to see, like visit a couple of schools, she has, she's going to kind of divide us up so that we're not all at one school. Um, and, and put us with some certain staff members so that we can, so all the schools are touched by somebody in the district on the first day. Um, so reach out to Olivia. She's working on that. Um, she was working on it today. So, um, is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. Medina?
Point of per, no, there, there was no motion. Small point of per, personal privilege. I just wanted to make sure our very, to acknowledge our very own Alicia Perrin is now the new assistant superintendent for instruction and leadership and school improvement up in New Haven. So just want a shout out and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, my Mr. Sikolovik, all favor?
Aye.
We're adjourning at 10:20.